Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the March 14th, 2016 City of Fayetteville Planning Commission meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask everyone to turn their phones to silent.
Just a minute.
Turn their phones to silent. And we have an unusual situation tonight where we're in a very small room because the other rooms being remodeled. And we have a couple of issues on our agenda that are rather large and I think we're going to have quite a bit of public turnout for them. The one in particular, I believe, is our last item of the evening. So maybe, yeah. So if we did have a situation where we're running short of chairs and somebody is here for an item before the one that you want to hear about or talk about, I might have to ask you to wait in the hall for a little while until we get to, you know, get through the one that we're trying to address at the time. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak and to hear what's going on, but we're just in such a small room tonight that it may not be possible. And I don't want anybody to come here for item number two and not be able to get into the room because item number 10 is, you know, everybody's here for that one, so.
And of course, that is the cellphone tower one, it's the very last one.
Yes, yes, thank you, Kit. So, keep that in mind. We're all going to try and do the best we can in this room. And if you can't hear me, tell me, I'll try and talk later. And anyway, cell phone's off and we'll, do we have listening devices or anything like that? No, okay, all right. So Andrew, would you please call the roll?
Selby.
Here.
Autry.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Chesser.
Brown.
Here.
Cook.
Present.
Hoffman.
Present.
Bunch.
Here.
Noble.
Here.
Okay, this evening, we have a couple of items on our consent agenda. The first being the approval of the minutes from the February 22nd, 2016 meeting. Second being vacation 165324, the northeast corner of Drake and McConnell, for Nelms Climbing Gym. Third, vacation 165322 for, excuse me, 2011 West Foxglove Drive Crane Volkswagen. Fourth, vacation 165323, vacation, uh, for, excuse me, 4030 North College Avenue Whataburger. Fifth, administrative item 165376 for the links at Fayetteville Phase Two. Sixth item is administrative item 165355 for southwest of Persimmon and 54th Street, Legacy Point subdivision. The seventh item is CCP 1552, concurrent plat for the southeast corner of Broyles Avenue and Persimmon Street, Cross Keys North subdivision. Would anybody like to pull any of these items for further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I'd like to recuse from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second, okay. And y'all will have to bear with me because everybody's out of whack and I'm as bad enough as it is.
Madam Chair, I'll also recuse on the consent vote.
Okay, so we have two people recusing. Commissioner Cook has made a motion to approve the consent agenda and we have a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
[coughs]
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoffman. Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, our first item of all business is administrative item 165340. It's for UDC Chapter 164.19 amendments. And Mr. Garner, would you please give us the staff report on that? Or is it, or is it Mr. Petty?
I can give an update on it. The item was discussed at our February 22nd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. This is to modify our section of code on accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission requested that staff evaluate some basic tenants of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that we have written in there, including dwelling unit size, number of bedrooms, building height, things of that nature. And so there's quite a bit of background and a lot of valid reasons why we have a lot of those sections in the code. And so we put together, we did a lot of research, we met internally as staff, and as you can see in your packet, we have 94 pages plus 103 pages. So there was quite a bit of background that went into the original ordinance. And we've discussed in your staff report while we're proposing certain changes. The main change that I think staff is comfortable with, that you asked us to look at, was the minimum square footage size of an accessory dwelling unit. And we are comfortable allowing that to be increased from 600 square feet to 800 square feet. We're not comfortable changing any of the other requirements that you asked us to look at, such as building height or number of bedrooms and things like that. As you can kind of see through the staff report, in our opinion, once you start changing some of those things, it ceases to be an accessory dwelling unit potentially. And that's not the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to have a primary dwelling on a property and a small accessory dwelling unit. There's other ways to get density in a single-family neighborhood, but I think the main reason behind this ordinance initially was to allow for some small accessory dwelling units, kind of in the backyards, behind existing homes. And so we still feel that most of the requirements in the code are still valid. And if somebody does desire to have two full dwelling units or, you know, two two-bedroom homes on one lot, that would be a case of where we'd recommend them go through and change the zoning of the property or request a duplex and attach them together. There's a lot of other cities that have adopted these types of codes. We've compared that in the analysis in your staff report. So we are on par, I believe, with what other cities around the nation are doing with this code. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petty, do you have anything to add to that?
No ma'am, I'm just anxious to hear the discussion.
Okay, okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring you back.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, I'm glad we're looking at this. I'm happy to see the change from six to 800 square foot. I'm not completely convinced that it goes far enough. In particular, I'm curious about, at the last time we discussed this, I brought up the idea of potentially making that a footprint regulation as opposed to an overall square footage regulation. In my opinion, the, you know, the overall height is already regulated by other sections of the code that we're not going to change. And so if we're going to say that it's okay to build a two-story accessory dwelling unit as long as the ground floor is only for cars, that is, it's only a garage, I guess I just don't understand why we should be so concerned with the use of that space that it couldn't also be part of the living space of that, of that second dwelling unit. So if, I don't know, Mr. Petty, if you want to address that or staff? Andrew?
Yeah, I think, well, I don't know if you want to answer it, either your opinion or, from the staff perspective, our staff report, you know, discusses that topic in detail. The intent of the accessory dwelling unit code is to have a small accessory dwelling unit to a principal structure. And so the limitations of height are appropriate, in our opinion, you know, where the single-family home would typically be larger in mass and scale than the accessory dwelling unit. So having a 45-foot tall accessory dwelling unit would probably not appear as accessory. It would probably, well, it's one of the big issues with these is really trying to make them fit in with the neighborhood. We're talking a whole nother dwelling unit on a single-family lot, a lot that is zoned for a single-family dwelling.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is that if we're already allowing that you can go multiple stories just by putting the 800 square feet on top of a garage instead of on the ground, then I'm guessing what's the difference in just saying that 800 square feet could be just a footprint regulation? And therefore, you could do, you could do two stories of living space, you could do two stories of a garage and living space? I guess I just don't see what difference it makes in terms of the size and area and everything else in terms of outward appearance to a neighbor, for example. In other words, so if I'm a neighbor and I'm like on the fence about whether I want my next-door neighbor building an accessory dwelling unit, what difference does it make to me whether or not they put their cars down there or they put bookshelves?
You could, you could build an accessory dwelling unit on the bottom floor as well.
But you couldn't go, you couldn't go two stories with an 800 square foot footprint unless the bottom story is a garage, is that correct?
No, you could do two 400 square foot, or two 400 square foot, I mean, I guess you could potentially do 400 on the bottom and 400 on the top.
You could do, you could do an 800-square-foot garage on the bottom and an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. And end up essentially with a 1,600-square-foot building.
Correct.
And that's completely allowed under this, right?
Right. And I think that's just part of the development pattern that you typically see in a neighborhood is where, you know, you have parking underneath an apartment. And again, if you have a full living space on the bottom and then another full living space on the top, it starts to become larger. The impact on the neighborhood is larger potentially in terms of, maybe not the visual presence of the building would still be the same, but you're losing parking spaces, so you're going to have to have that somewhere else, it's going to spill out into the yard somewhere. And so you're losing some of that backyard space, the privacy from the neighbors potentially. And so it's just, it takes that impact and just crams in a little bit more onto the property. So I think that's where we're, we're a little more cautious on that side, I think. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Andrew, what are our regulations on cottage houses? I know that we've got some regulations that so many square feet on the first floor, so many square feet on the second floor, and that collectively, they can't exceed so many square feet. What is that? Just as a comparison.
Yeah, for, it's 900 square feet on the first floor, maximum of 1,100 square feet. I'm not 100% certain, but it's somewhere around about that scale.
That's correct.
If I remember correctly, if you, you have 1,100 square foot footprint, if you decide to park a car in there, that goes against your footage, your overall footage, does it not?
For a cottage?
Yep. I think that was one of the things that kind of just-
I don't believe so. I think you, I think the 1,100 square feet is, I can't, I can't be certain. I think, I thought it was heated and cooled space.
I didn't-
And they do a carport separately from that.
Yeah, I didn't think that it was. I think that was when it first came through, I think, and I could be wrong.
Yeah.
I've slept many times since then, but seems like one of the things I objected to when that came through was I didn't like the fact that if you actually put a garage on the house, it went against your square footage.
I don't believe it does. I may be wrong, but I don't-
You anything about that, Matt?
I don't believe we've processed cottage housing development that's actually been constructed, so I'm not sure that that's actually been tested and interpreted officially, but Andrew would be the point of record there.
Okay. I know that we've tried to design some of these before, some of these ADUs, and 600 square feet is virtually impossible to design anything, anything that anybody would actually want to inhabit, anyway. I still think 800 square feet is too tight. Personally, I'd like, and I know what we're after here. We're trying to avoid multiple bedrooms, which parks more cars, which is more impact on the lot, more impact on the neighborhood. I totally get it. But the, I mean, I would, I personally would like to see something closer to 950 or 1,000 feet, but it's just my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Petty.
Yes, thank you. One point I want to make is that, you know, I think that all of us are very interested in seeing an update to this ordinance. And I think staff is being very sensitive to any kind of political concerns that may arise through the changes that are being proposed. And I want to encourage you to also be sensitive to that. That's not to say that you shouldn't amend what is before you. I think that, you know, we're here asking for your counsel, and if you think it's better to amend the ordinance, you should. And I think staff should give you the same kind of respect that you're giving their proposal if you choose to do that. Personally speaking, you know, I think I'm a little less conservative on this than staff is, but I'm supportive of the changes that they're bringing forward, and I hope that the council will also be supportive of their changes. I also think that the council has a deep respect for any amendments that you might make as a planning commission, particularly if there's broad consensus. And so in terms of, you know, all that being said, in terms of my opinion, I tend to agree that 800 square feet seems a little arbitrary. You know, I think that if you look at a typical three-car garage, the nominal dimensions are usually, add up to about 864 square feet. And if we're not going to go with the footprint methodology, that would probably where I'd put the lower bound myself, personally. I would also say that, you know, I think that it's important for us to realize the ecosystem that the organ, that this ordinance might exist in, in particular, the International Residential Code, which defines accessory structures and limits them to two stories or less, which is in effect, period. So I really think that the building height conversation is moot because the International Residential Code is going to overrule anything we might say here that might be more liberal. I'd also say that, keep in mind, as long as it's not an, as long as it's not a dwelling unit, people have the freedom to build any kind of accessory structure they want, as long as it conforms to the residential code. So that means that they could build a 1,200-square-foot outbuilding for their daughter to live in or for a shop or for an office that come with all the same kinds of privacy concerns that staff is trying to juggle now. And I think what you need to weigh is, when you cross the line from these wholly, wholly private buildings, like an office in an outbuilding, into something that you might be renting to a student or a professor or a young professional or a mother-in-law, what kind of implications does that have? Personally, I don't feel like the difference between 800 or 1,000 square feet has much of an implication. I don't think the difference between one bedroom and as many bedrooms as your floor plan will support really has an implication because anybody who designs and builds these things knows that you can label a room anything you want. And as long as you don't call it bedroom, you're going to be able to get it approved, which we talked about last time. So for me, the line between a building I'm building for myself and the exact same building I'm building for somebody else on my own property is very faint. But I think that that's for you to decide in your wisdom. I hope that you will share it. It's going to be important for the council as they weigh this ordinance and any changes you might suggest.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Autry.
And just a clarification, Andrew, you said you could have a 800-square-foot footprint garage, say, if you wanted, and then an additional 800 foot above that, correct?
That's correct.
And that's all inclusive in this? Okay, I like that idea. I would like to see it grow a little bit more from 800, maybe, to at least 1,000 square feet because even in the 800 realm, you're going to be very, very tight. So, but other than that, I think as long as we're covered on that and could increase the size of the footprint idea, I really like. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I have no problem with increasing the square footage from 600 to 800. And in certain circumstances, maybe it need, it could be larger, too. If we want to consider that, is it possible to put some language in there that says that if you want to go to 1,000 or 1,200 square feet, it would be through a conditional use permit? And then that would allow us to see the details of that and how that works in that particular situation? So that would give the commission flexibility to, on a case-by-case basis, look at a larger square footage. Is that a possible amendment? Give us that flexibility to look at it.
Yes, yeah, right now, under the code, if you want to build one larger than the code, you come before the planning commission with a variance, so that is built in right now.
So a variance is built in.
Right, the planning commission has seen, not very often, but maybe once a year, I think you'll see a variance for an accessory dwelling unit or something that is proposed larger than the standard size. And there has been some denials of those. In particular, you know, we've had one that was above, proposed above a three-car garage and the neighbor, if you guys remember, one of the neighbors came, some of the older planning commissioners-
Off a township.
Yeah, off a township, and it was blocking, blocking their view because of the mass of it, and it was larger than the 600 square feet, and so that one was denied. And then you approved one earlier this year for a poolhouse, essentially, that was functioning as a poolhouse.
Okay, so the flexibility is there, is built in already?
Correct.
Do we manage this, the percent of lot coverage? That all in our regulations? Sets a maximum footprint coverage, percent coverage?
Some of the zoning districts do have a maximum percentage, some of them do not.
Some do.
Yeah, depends on the-
Wouldn't that be a major consideration when you're looking at these ADUs? That you don't want that to push you over the maximum? Isn't that a downside if you start to build too much on a lot that you lose, that you start to get into some negative impacts due to-
Correct.
And that brings me to the last item that I was thinking about when I was reading this. Is there a possibility to vary the square footage allowed by lot size? You know, so that for smaller lots, the square footage is less, for larger lots, the square footage is-
Well, when a variance would be brought to you, that certainly is something you could look at, and that's probably the time to talk about it there rather than trying to set it now in the abstract.
And set it.
Well, and one of the-
I know some communities do that. I've done, in my research.
Yeah, some of the, one of the reasons we are proposing 800 square feet is because we are not proposing a percentage of the site maximum. So this, that's one way to check and balance. Some of the cities allow for basically an endless, you know, if you have a larger lot, you can build a larger accessory dwelling unit up to a certain size. It starts to get pretty complicated, so that's kind of why we did it this way.
No, I, I have no problem with what staff has proposed. In fact, I want to applaud them for taking a look at the, our regulations. I know this is not the only one that you're, you've been looking at it in terms of improving, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cook?
Please, thank you. I agree with staff's comments, too. Seeing where this started and where it's come over the years, I think it's a prudent baseline. As we said, we have the opportunity to look at larger and different things through the variance process, so if somebody wants to do something different, they can come through and ask us for it. I remember the project that kind of got this started on this, and I mean, I think as we, this is an accessory dwelling unit, it's not a dwelling unit. I mean, I know people, several friends of mine live in houses that are 800 square feet, so I don't want people to start building, creating basically tandem lots in their backyard, you know, and I'm not a big fan of those. So I think, I think staff has done a prudent job of making the changes. I think these are reasonable changes, and I'm supportive of what they have on paper right now.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I just want to say, also, I really appreciate what you guys have been doing, both the staff and Alderman Petty, working on this. I think that we're moving the ball forward, and I will, I will vote for this despite my reservations. But I do want to also echo something that Alderman Petty brought up, which is this question about the number of bedrooms. And I just, personally, I don't, I don't think that it's necessary for us to sort of try to legislate architectural design to that extent on the interior of a building. I understand all the arguments about impact to the neighborhood, but, you know, I think that if we're going to say that we're giving somebody 800 square feet, period, you know, that has certain implications in terms of the overall effect of the building, of the building on the exterior and what everybody's going to be looking at. And I just, I think that trying to legislate the number, things like the number of bedrooms and whether cars can live there or people can live there, I think that it just makes our code that much more complicated and, in this case, in ways that I'm not even convinced that we can actually, that we can actually enforce. So I am a little bit disappointed in that, but having said that, I'm happy to move the ball forward and vote if somebody wants to make a motion on this.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Andrew, I have a question. One of the comparables you used was Austin, Texas. This is 1,100 square feet or FAR of 0.15, whichever is smaller. What does that mean?
It's a floor area ratio. It's a percentage, again, of the, you know, the site and the building, so it gets pretty complicated pretty quickly. I would prefer not to use that, it gets pretty, most people don't understand what that means, and it's kind of complicated, too.
Is that floor ratio relevant to the primary structure?
I'm not sure exactly. I can't recall. Leaf Olson, I recruited some other staff to help with the project, I'm not sure if that floor area ratio was for the full lot, usually it's referring to the lot when you see that.
You're going to say it had to be an off-the-bake house?
Yeah.
Primary house, about 17,000 feet. Okay, okay, well, and I agree with, with Commissioner Hoskins' comments or what have you. I'm also one of these people that, if you have, if you have the opportunity to fix it, fix it. You know, is there any way that we can make a, a motion on size, separate from the overall motion of the ordinance?
Well, Andrew?
Sure, I think you could, you could make a motion for any of the items separately, pull them out separately, and vote on the rest altogether, however you want to do it.
Madam Chair.
Were you finished?
Yeah, I'm done, yeah. For this moment, yeah. Surely.
Sorry. Do it while you can. Mr. Petty.
Thank you for allowing the interruption. I strongly encourage you to give an up or down clean vote, especially on an ordinance like this. It's not like a rezoning decision where you've got a piece of geography that you can pull out, like one of the recent rezoning decisions. Slicing and dicing the code, I think, adds a lot more confusion that's not necessary.
But I think that you could make a motion to increase the space to, if you wanted to, you could make a motion to amend C1 from 600, which is now being proposed to be 800 by staff. If you want to go higher than that, you could make a motion like that before the final motion. And then if you, if it passes, then that's what the final motion will be. If it fails, then it won't be that way.
So you're saying, don't split the motion out, just-
No, just make a motion right now, if you want to do an interim motion to change a provision that's being presented to you.
Well.
Make your motions work, whatever.
Well, I think I'll, what page, which page do you find it on the C1?
Seven.
I've got 200 pages in it.
I've got it on 100 up there on my computer account.
I'll show it up on 100.
I think if you wanted to make, you could just make your motion for the request is proposed by staff, increasing the square footage, however, increase the square footage of the size to whatever you say it, whatever you want it to be.
Okay.
Instead of refer, you don't have to refer to the exact sentence.
Okay, well, I think I'll make that motion to increase the maximum square footage from 800 square feet to 950 square feet.
Okay.
Thank you for a second from anybody who wants to give it up.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to, forward this on to the city council.
No, no, just to change the maximum square footage.
Hang on, hang on, let me get to the stage here. Okay, just to change, just to change from 800 square feet to 950 square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Hoskins and a second by Commissioner Autry.
Can, can we have some discussion before we make the vote?
Just make it pass, we've got lots to make.
Yeah, you know what?
Okay, I'm going to vote no, not because I think there's something special about 800 versus 950, but I feel, after the answers that I received on my questions, that we will have that flexibility to look at a 950-square-foot project also, already. And I just think it'd be cleaner, and the staff has put a lot of effort into this, and so I'm going to vote no on this because I'm going to vote yes on the item. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to-
it'd be cleaner, and the staff has put a lot of effort into this, and so I'm going to vote no on this because I'm going to vote yes on the item. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to change the square footage from 800 to 950. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser? Brown?
No.
Cook?
No.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay.
Surprised, actually. Now we need another motion over the whole thing.
Yeah, now we need another motion over the whole thing.
All right. I think I could dig one of those up. All right. So, I'll make a motion to approve ADM 16-5340 as amended. Actually, this is a recommendation, isn't it, to the city council?
With recommendation of approval.
With a recommendation of approval to the city council. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the recommendation to the city council by Commissioner Hoskins, and a second by Commissioner Hoffman. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our, our first item, thank you, Mr. Petty.
Thank you.
Our first item of new business is conditional use 165316. Wait a minute, let me make sure I'm on the right page here. Yeah. For 4201 North Shiloh Drive, temporary carnival, oh, at Northwest Arkansas Mall parking lot. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. This is a similar conditional use request we've had in the past, in fact, last year. Small temporary carnival at Northwest Arkansas Mall. Applicants requesting to operate this between the days of June 22nd and June 25th, for those three days, and setup time, inspection time, and some breakdown time. So the whole project will take between, looks like the 19th and the 27th, so a full week. Again, we've done this before, we've had no complaints, it seems to have been a successful event, and staff is recommending approval with five conditions that you see before either applicant, applicant's conditions.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item?
It's the applicant first.
Excuse me, who's the applicant, I'm sorry. Do you have anything else to add? Would you state, come up and state your name for the record and?
Teddy Burlingame, Pride Amusement.
Ma'am, do you have anything else to add to this?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Have you read the conditions of approval?
No, I have not, I just got into town.
Maybe she should be informed of them.
Shall I read this?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Number one, the carnival shall operate only for the four days between June 25th and June, or June 22nd and June 25th, per year letter. The carnival is subject to outdoor noise ordinance and should comply with all ordinance requirements, and that ordinance is enforced by the police department, same as last year. All signs shall comply with city Fayetteville sign ordinance, same as last year. All materials, rides, trash, portable toilets, utility services associated with this use shall be completely removed from the property by July 1st, 2016.
Yes.
And number five, appropriate traffic and pedestrian, excuse me, control barriers shall be installed and maintained for public safety.
Are all those conditions satisfactory to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't, if you, we don't need anything else from you probably. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Autry.
What is a city without a carnival? I know there may be some additional discussion possibly, but I'd like to make a motion for conditional use 16-5316, conditional use for the carnival at the Northwest Arkansas Mall.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion made by Commissioner Autry for conditional use 165316 for the temporary carnival at the Northwest Arkansas Mall, second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, madam.
Okay, our next item is conditional use 165337. It's for 2907 East Joyce Boulevard, Suite 7 Posh Events. Mr. Garner, would you please give us the staff report on this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is the commercial, kind of commercial strip mall center at the corner of Joyce and crossover, to the southwest corner. The applicant is proposing to use one of the spaces that she's leasing at for events, including things such as wedding showers, parties, and other private events. They would also use the space for general retail gifts and things like that. This particular event space is classified as use unit for cultural and recreational facilities, and so the property is zoned C1 neighborhood commercial, and this use unit is a conditional use permit, and staff is recommending in favor of the request. I think there's a, a good reason why some of these event venues have to go through conditional use permits, sometimes they could be really loud and noisy and things like that, and might not be compatible in surrounding areas, but in this case, it's, it's surrounded by commercial, and it's also very small scale types of events, so we're recommending in favor. We haven't had any comments from any of the neighbors. There's some basic conditions of approval here. Condition of approval number one is just determination of compatibility. Condition of approval number two is hours of operation for the facility, and we're just referencing there what the applicant proposed, which was the event should be limited to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekends only. However, I did talk to the applicant today, and she's actually sick, she couldn't make the meeting, but she requested that we increase the hours of operation to allow to 8:00 PM on weekends in case there's something that goes a little bit later. Everything else is pretty straightforward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So she's not here, so do we, is there anybody else that would be?
She doesn't have a representative, and I told her we could hear, you could hear the item, you could approve it, or you could enable it if you feel like there's something that needs to be?
I, I am, I, I mean, I think it's pretty, to me, it's pretty straightforward, I don't see any reason to table this item. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
Andrew, is there, I'm just curious, is there an occupancy limit on this size building as far as fire code?
They will have to get an occupancy permit before they can open for business. I don't know what that is, the fire marshal will have to look at that.
Okay, so he's still going to do that?
Yep.
Okay. That's my one little question. I know there are some apartments next door to that, but these hours are fairly limited, so I don't see an issue with that really, so I'll go ahead and make a motion unless anybody else wants to say anything, so I'll make a motion to approve condition use permit 16-5337, changing condition number two to hours limited to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekends only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Cook to approve CUP 165337, and a second made by Commissioner Hoskins. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is conditional use 165334. It's for 1921 North Old Wire Road, Born Barn. Mr. Thompson, give us the staff report on that, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a property located at the corner of Ash Street and Old Wire Road, it's a large parcel, entirely pasture, it has been used as a pasture for 80 years, I believe, according to the applicant. This is one of very few large properties in Fayetteville that has historic agricultural use continuing on it, and the property is currently developed with an older barn, age is unknown, it's about 1,900 square feet. The applicant owns an additional one acre parcel adjacent to this where he has two homes, and, and one of those, he lives, those houses are 1935, 1945, so this is an older arrangement, it's always been in the same situation as, as far as staff knows. The homeowner is requesting approval to construct a, an accessory building, would be a barn for agricultural use, as I understand it's approximately 3,200 square feet, and will be used for livestock and equipment, and, and I think, I frankly think it's just a very nice barn that he would like to build on his property. As I understand it, he's planning to dismantle a barn, photographs are in your packet, import it from somewhere in Michigan or Minnesota or somewhere, I think he might tell you. And, as you know, the ordinance does, do not allow, Development Code doesn't allow an accessory structure, so, without a conditional use, but you can certainly allow him to do this with, with conditions that satisfy you. Staff's recommending approval of this conditional use, finding that it's compatible entirely with the neighborhood, it's a very large parcel, and it has been in agricultural use without issue for 80 years or so. I'd be happy to answer questions for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the applicant present? Come on up, and if you have anything else you'd like to add to that, please do it. State your name clearly for the record so we can record you.
Jacob Born.
Okay, do you have anything else to add to that?
I do not.
Okay. This is a beautiful looking barn. So, is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
I love this piece of property. I love that there's still livestock on it, I think that's awesome, and I really don't have any issue with the barn. The only comment that I had some concern about was you had mentioned as a workshop and possibly for seasonal or special events. So when you say that, what do you, if you don't mind me asking, what do you have in mind with that statement?
When, when we purchased the property, I, I love that it's still agricultural, I view that as a real advantage, even from a cultural standpoint, aesthetic standpoint for East Fayetteville, and so my preference would be to not develop the property into a neighborhood like has happened across the street and such, and so I, my sort of dream scenario would be to, to plant row crops, blueberries, blackberries, maybe raspberries, and, and possibly have a U-Pic operation right there in the, in the heart of town, but that would be at least a couple of years out, and I suppose another, perhaps another approval process even for that, I'm, I'm not so sure.
Good. So I guess that's my question, staff, let's say he gets the barn built, and it, he wants to start doing some type of event or something out there, he would come back through again?
Yeah, I think it depends on the kind of, the type of event, but he, he may or may not, if, if he wants to hold weddings in the barn, that would definitely be a conditional use permit. If there's just some strawberries and, and people will just go out there and pick them, it may, may not require permit. You can, some people, you know, by our code, that's just agricultural use allowed anywhere, but if he, if he gets, starts getting lots of people there and it's kind of rudding up the dirt, you know, large numbers of people, they would have to come through, so. I think we're safe as far as this, this permit that you're, would be granting here would not grant any special event permit.
Right. Another thing I had in there is, I know you've got a gate on the north side, and you talked about adding one on the south side, would staff have any issue with that? Because that would come out on Ash Street right there?
As long as it meets our access management codes, by the time that he wants to do that, I think it's adequate, it certainly has, you know, plenty of street frontage in order to do something like that under our codes.
Right. Good, that was my only comment.
I have, you know, I really, I think this is a, I love the idea of putting a barn like this on there, that's, like I said before, that's a gorgeous barn, I love, I hate to see old structures like that just fall down, a lot of the ones around the area have, have, have fallen in. So I'm in support of this, if anybody would like to make a motion, or we have any other comments here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Autry.
I too agree with this, it would be a very beautiful look for that area, 80 years plus is an agricultural staple right in the center of Fayetteville, so I would like to make a motion of conditional use 16-5334, North Old Wire Road, Born, be approved for as, with all conditions.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve made by Commissioner, of conditional use 165334, Commissioner Autry, and a second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Born. Okay, our next item is conditional use 155278 for 2518 North Crossover Road CrossFit Committee. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will. This is also a site that we may be familiar with, having been through attempted rezones on this property in the past couple of years, that were ultimately failed to be passed by the city council. The property is, subject property's about an acre, just a little over an acre, in the RSF 2 zone, right on Crossover Road. It's called Lindwood State Subdivision, lots 5 and 6. This property is, again, well, let's just say, in a residential neighborhood, entirely residential, RSF 4 largely, there's not a lot of commercial activity here until you go south to Michigan and crossover, and then all the way to Zion and Joyce. Williams Center is there, of course, but in between, there's very little otherwise. An applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a commercial activity on the site, approximately 6,000 square foot crossfit training gym, and a parking lot with 25 or so parking places. The applicant's letter describes this facility basically saying that it's, it's more of a facility that does, say, what are those, personal training in, in small groups, so it's a little bit different than a standard gym with large classes, I believe. Classes are limited, not limited, but typically around 10 to 15 people. The busiest times of day are at 5:00 in the morning, according to the applicant, and then after work. You know, we have received public comment about this, significant public comment as a matter of fact, phone calls, lots of emails. I do have a petition here that we received, I think, today, that is from neighbors that are opposed to the, the project, largely it's due to regions of traffic and the residential character of the neighborhood. We have recently done major renovations on Crossover Road that have increased the traffic there, and hopefully have helped traffic flow a little bit, a little bit better. An unusual aspect of, of these lots is there is no left turn out of them, a few hundred feet before you can turn left, so it's right in, right out only, there's a median right there on Crossover Road. For traffic reasons, and also largely for aesthetic reasons, and, you know, maintenance or, or protection of single family neighborhoods within our city, it's one of our goals to do that. Staff is, finds this building's a little bit too large, and doesn't provide enough appearance, similar to the neighborhood, incompatible essentially with the residential neighborhood, for those reasons, and we are recommending denial of this project tonight. Be happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Okay, thank you. I forgot, before, before I asked you to start on this, that I need to recuse myself from this item, so I'm going to step outside while you finish up the public comment and let Commissioner Noble take over for a minute.
Is the applicant present? Come on up. Come on up. State your name for the record and any additional comments?
Jerry Jones.
Okay. Can you tell us, do you have anything to add, or?
Yes, I do a few things. I would like to ask, if it's permissible to, my neighbor to the north of me, who is Mr. John Brown, who has had surgery today, I ask if a note in- John Brown, who has had surgery today, ask if a note in favor of this, not rezoning, but conditional use permit, he was in favor. And I do have a note from him stating so. I don't know if it'd be something that would be permissible, be passed around or if...
I'll leave that for you to read.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Go ahead and read it.
It's from Mr. John Brown to Mr. Jerry Jones and the developers. I have no problem with his plan for next week's planning. I am his neighbor to the north and I have owned this property for almost 50 years. So he did want me to read that. Thank you for listening to that. I'm kind of a familiar face with most of you, most of the commissioners here tonight. And I appreciate this opportunity. I developed this property back in '06. And I'm still trying to find a place for somebody to sell some lots. I mean, it's been a little bit of a struggle over the years and everything. But what I'd rather do than, I know there's a lot of opposition here against us tonight. But what I'd rather do, rather than criticize or complain about my neighbors for coming out against this project, I'd rather like to appeal, if possible, to their soft side and assure them that this is more of a community-minded project. What is better suited than a very small exercise facility with a destination to walk to? I've tried real hard over the years to sell lots to people. I have a real estate agent here tonight that will confirm the difficulty we've had since Crossover Road has been expanded. And we just have not had one call. I mean, that's a strange scenario, if you will. But we just haven't had any calls over the last few years about this. And we've, we have worked diligently to try to find something that would be compatible for the area. And I want, I want my neighbors to be happy. I mean, I want to be treated the same way. But what I feel like we're trying to do here today is put something in that's very soft to the community. And something that will set back in those woods. And the land in itself will dwarf the 6,000 square foot building. So it will look very appealing. I've seen the, staff has seen the drawings of it. And I don't, I think I'm correct in saying that, I think that they work with us somewhat trying to come up with a building that will look residential on Crossover Road. And I think it, I think it looks very nice, a very nice building. But that leaves me with basically just, if this is permitted, this leaves me with another two and a half lots. And that's not to say that somebody might not come along someday, might want to build a house. I have no idea. It hasn't been the case in the last several years. But I appeal to you, I mean, I mean, it's, I know it's my problem. I chose to build, put this subdivision in. Never dreamed I'd have this kind of difficulty. But, I mean, I just really need some help. Is there, I mean, am I going to pay taxes forever on this land and just sit there and just let it just sit? And I don't ever have a chance to sell these lots or to somebody. This project isn't intended to cause people to lose the values of their home, but I think it would rather help increase the value of the property in the area. I also personally think that this also fits in the 2030 plan for Crossover Road. You know, at a time when Fayetteville is needing revenue for upcoming projects like the new expansion of the library, we need more firemen, more policemen, it seems, it seems to me that we could use a project like this to generate more revenue. Certainly not anything being generated right now with the lots just sitting there, other than my sitting there paying taxes on it year in and year out. Again, we're not asking for a rezone of this property. We're asking for a conditional use permit as outlined and permitted by the city. This fits inside that criteria. I mean, a lot of research has been done on that. So if we're going to have a set of standards whereby if you look up and see what is, what's usable in a conditional use permit, and if it fits an exercise facility, then why not? Why not let this be put on this property? Nothing else is going in there. I would like for my neighbors to look at this as an opportunity for, you know, for, you know, new business, you know, to help other people and help take care of themselves. I mean, at a time in America when we're all trying to take care of ourselves, what better, what better facility than to put in an exercise facility? A destination where people can walk to in the community, walk across Crossover and have a good time. Honestly, it's been a long five years trying to sell these lots. Actually, longer than that. But to be, you know, proactive and really trying to get after it and sell these lots, I'm just, would really appreciate the city's strong consideration for passing this. And I, and it's not to hurt anybody, but rather try to help. And I would hope that y'all would pass this for Mr. Hendrickson. And know that, that I think in time it would fit nicely. And who knows? Some people that might be against this project right now may become members. So thank you for your consideration and I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Okay. We'll get back with you with any questions we do have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to open the floor to public comment. You can state your name for the record and try to keep it brief and try not to repeat if, obviously, we have two more items on.
Yeah. Well, I'm Fannie Long. And I wrote in, so you all have seen my comments. But, and I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Jones said, and that is that, you know, generating business in the area. And the problem that I see, even though it is a CUP and not a rezone, it opens the door for other opportunities for people to finagle in businesses or things of that nature on down the road. And I feel like the whole, we've been two years, three years repurposing that whole entire strip to make it look beautiful coming into Fayetteville from the east side. And I just, I don't want it to look like a college ave, just because, you know, someone got us a UP and then that opened the door to this and then to that, and then this and that on the other side, and when it was zoned for residential. And I think as I sent in my notes and others did too, I think that's the main concern really, is we want to keep it residential as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I live, do you need to know where I live?
You wouldn't need to add this for the record. It's helpful if you want to state your address.
I live in Edenbrook, which is on the corner of Township and Crossover. And we live behind a great big brick wall, which, I know that helps with the noise and everything, but that's where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jody Hendricks, and I also live in the area. I'm at 2590 North Firewood, which is the neighborhood adjacent to the property. I'm the buyer and I'm the owner of CrossFit Commence. And the purpose of this conditional use permit, obviously, is for us to construct a new facility to house our existing business. We're currently in the Harps Shopping Center down the street, and we've been in business for about three years. In addition to the information that I provided you in your packets, I'll hit a couple of talking points and I'll try to be as short and as objective as possible. Looking at it from a top-down with the concept of highest and best use, the land is zoned RSF2, which is residential zoning that calls for two dwellings per acre. And although I am involved with the tenant and a partner in that, I'm first and foremost a real estate professional with a dozen years in the business. I live in that area. And my opinion is, is if the, if the highest and best use for these lots was residential, there would be houses located on them. The lots were last individually listed at less than $100,000 for a pretty good-sized lot, over a half acre, not quite a full acre. And East Fayetteville, believe it or not, that's a pretty decent deal. There was a lot that just sold in Candlewood. It was only on the market for a couple of days, sold for $100,000. It was significantly smaller, big house going up on it. And this lot was almost considered unbuildable by some. It was highly elevated and there was probably, there was two excavators out there at $600 a day for approximately 30 days. So to me, that cost has to be built into the cost of the lot. So people are willing to pay a lot of money for a residential lot in East Fayetteville. And these are kind of a bargain compared to some of that. So I just don't feel like that can really be considered the highest and best use. These are located on what the city calls a principal arterial parkway. And the traffic is in excess of 20,000 cars a day at this point. And I get it. I live in that area and I want it to be safe, but we're asking for a conditional use permit on a considerably busy four-lane divided highway. Additionally, as it's already been stated, a couple of attempts, or one attempt has been voted down, there's been a couple of attempts to rezone this, and it keeps getting shot down. So if, begs the question, if not, if not this, then what? The conforming nature of the development, its compatibility, this is, you know, we've tried to, you've seen your packets, it's got a 512 pitch roof on it, it's metal roof. We've got a stucco-type veneer on the building, windows, a garage door. We've tried to make it look as residential as possible. The distance between Township and Old Wire is right at 4,000 feet, so a little over three quarters of a mile. Within that short distance, there are a lot of houses. There's three churches. There is a large parcel of land that's zoned RO, which contains the Williams Gymnastics Center. That's a large metal building. And a Quonset hut, large parking lot. And there's also the fire station and the cell tower. So what are we trying to be compatible with? I mean, that is a, in that short span of highway where there's 20,000 cars a day, there's lots of different stuff going on. So we're asking for 6,000 square feet on a 45,000 square foot lot. So I just, I feel like that we're a little more compatible than probably what we're getting credit for. The traffic that our business generates is low and we're already in the immediate area, so we're not bringing any new traffic to the area. Yes, we may grow, but our growth is very slow. It's a few members a month and this is, we are not a $10 a month type facility. We have about 150 members total. And our members pay more than 10 times the advertised rate for the gym at the corner of Township and Crossover. So we're a completely different animal. This is where people go to be trained. It is expensive and our business model doesn't require a lot of people. It requires good people that are serious about doing what we're asking them to do. With regards to light and noise pollution, we're not going to have any outdoor music or lights, other than what the city requires. We might have a few people running around outside here and there, but there's already people, you know, that sidewalk gets trafficked fairly decently. There's a lot of running that goes along on Township and in and around those neighborhoods. So a couple of other people running around, I don't think is really going to be noticed. In short, we feel, you know, this is a crossover road in particular is a better fit for a low-density, small business, a local business to East Fayetteville, mind you, than it is for residents. I live in that subdivision, kind of right in behind there, and we don't have a lot of vehicle traffic. And I'm concerned about my kids all the time. I just don't see anybody building a house on a lot that has 20,000 cars a day. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The city has granted zoning that gives rise to non-residences, RO, directly north of the property. This property shares an entire border with the subject property. So if someone builds a house on there, that house is not going to be compatible with the zoning that's already in place directly next door. So for me, there's some reasons to like this project. I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of reasons why not to like it. Again, I think it's a, you know, the people are going to continue to try to build commercial type entities along Crossover because it's a valuable area, 20,000 cars a day. The demographic around there is really good. So this could be a situation where the known is better than the unknown. You get this one done, it's small, it's somewhat innocuous, it doesn't have a lot of traffic, rather than somebody coming down that has a lot more leverage and a lot better friends than I do that can get in here and push something through that has a higher impact. So again, I ask, you know, if not this, then what? I appreciate your time and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'll answer any questions.
If we have questions, we'll bring you back up.
I'm Dorothy Meacham, and I live in Hickory Park. I'm the president of the Property Owners Association. And we submitted a petition to Commissioner Quinn, and I guess maybe all of you have at least seen that by now. And my main objection really is traffic at that location. There's a great deal of traffic that goes east-west between College and Crossover and then, of course, the 20,000 cars a day that travel on Crossover itself. Because it is the single-direction access, you have a lot of U-turns on that particular intersection. I meant to look up how many accidents there have been there. I don't know. I've heard it's high. But there are children walking to and from Vandergriff and the other elementary school that is McNair. And so my main objection really is just the safety and the increase in congestion, particularly Crossover flows quite nicely. Township, not quite so nicely at this point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Ridgeway, and I'm a minority partner in the business with Jody. And Jody really hit on a lot of the highlights of that, and I just have a few things that I'd like to point out. Before I became a partner with Jody, I was an owner of a gym across the street from the Harps on Crossover called Catalyst Strength and Conditioning, next to the Sonic right there. And ironically, it's since turned into a donut shop. But the building itself, the blueprint of the building itself is very similar to the one that we're proposing. And it was a standalone building, had a roll-up garage door, and there was neighborhoods to the west, there was neighborhoods to the south and to the southeast there. And I never had any problems with noise ordinance or traffic flow or anything like that. And of course, traffic flow there, they could actually turn left or right or whatever. But the noise or anything like, nothing like that was ever a problem there at that facility there. Secondly, as, I think as Jody said as well, CrossFit is a little bit different business model than most of the other gyms in town. We're not like an FAC where we're open from 5:00 AM all the way through the day until 9:00 PM at night. We're only open during the designated hours for those classes that we hold. Classes are very small. I taught one this morning at 6:15 and I only had two people there. So some of our classes may be as high as 20 sometimes, but there would never really be a case where that lot would be completely, completely full, with the capacity like you would see at a FAC in that situation. Okay? That's really about it. I think that the, you know, we're not trying to cause any trouble. We're just looking for a great place to have our business. We're doing well where we're at now. But we would like to have a standalone facility and be able to actually own something versus paying rent somewhere. Is that it?
Okay.
Thank you.
I live right down, Mr. John Brown, who does not oppose this, and he had the letter from him. Jerry Jones is a friend of about 34 years, and a pretty close neighbor, and John Brown is also. And Jody Hendricks lives right across the street from me. I'm at 2595 Firewood Drive, which is very close proximity to this. I think this would be a good project for this, and it's really more suited for RO or commercial, and the property immediately north of it is RO. I think it would benefit the city with additional taxes needed for schools, sidewalks, parks, and improvements. I have several friends that are living real close to this, and several friends that are probably here opposing it. But I have no objection to this, and I would support this project. Thank you.
Nice to see my old friend Tracy out there. We have a history.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
About 10 years ago, maybe a little more, the planning department had a-
Do not state your name for the record.
Robert Sigafus.
Thank you.
It's Hardy Lane, which is butts, not butts, across the street from the proposed site. The planning department had a major study, and they decided that Mission and crossover and Joyce Boulevard would be commercial and avalanche zones. And in between, I mean, would be residential. Now, a lot of work went into that study, and that was a very popular planning tool in those days, and to me, it still is. And what you're doing now, I mean, is chipping away, the gentleman before said sooner or later, that nice farmland, which is on the east side, I mean, I bet every developer in Fayetteville's got his eye on that site. And a breaking of the zoning here, I mean, will just open the floodgates to further development down the line. Now, let's talk about the new parkway. Speed limit is 45 miles an hour. When cars leave Township heading north on the new freeway, 65 miles an hour is the speed. And when they get down to this proposed site, it's in the area 55, 60 miles an hour. I mean, it's fast traffic like that. Now, keep, imagine coming in and out of there, I mean, in between 4:00 in the afternoon and 7:00 at night, I mean, it'd be really, be a tough sell. So I think that the Boulevard that it put in is a very attractive site. It certainly was put in to move traffic, it moves traffic, 20,000 cars a day, how many cars would be on College Avenue were it not for this new 265? So that's been a great improvement, but to louse it up, I mean, and go against your own planning principles of Mission, crossover, shopping center, which is very nice, and also up at Joyce Boulevard, and then further up the line where the athletic gym is located. That's good planning. So I hope you will recognize that the opportunity, I mean, to keep it really good quality. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment on something that Mr. Jones said. I'm the Realtor for the property. And I've been the Realtor on the property for about two years. And just to bring to light the situation the property has gone through all this time, I've brought three builders to the property to look at it for potential specum construction. All of them have said the same thing, and it was actually the previous gentleman who said it best, that cars go down there 45 miles an hour. Builders and homeowners just don't want to live in that situation. So that it's residential, it's an old zoning. But now, because of the highway change, the widening and everything else, it's just become really a conductor. So people don't want to buy for residential purposes. And I just wanted to let you know, that's been the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Henry. I live on Township, right around the corner, across the street. And I guess, Mr. Hendricks had some good points about how the use of the land is a concern, as residents in the area have a concern about the use of the land. It was zoned rural originally, and then rezoned to residential. The zone RO that's immediately to the north of him is a small triangular sliver of land that's been compromised by the widening. Our concern when they had the rezoned, attempted rezoning two years ago, was that it would bring residential office. We talked about a high traffic rate coming there, and we have a couple of residential lots, a couple of cars turning in and out per day, versus several, I don't know how many in a office building would be, but we're concerned about this conditional use permit setting the tone for all of the other lots, becoming another conditional. We heard several conditional use permits for temporary farm animals, or reuse of a current building, but if you have this zoned or conditional use, it really sets the tone for the rest of the projects. And ultimately, if you back it up, there's a one and a half acre there, and it'd be, it'd just go, I'm afraid, commercial one on that corner. It may not be your intended purpose, but I have a concern. And it's just the lack of planning. The other thing I worry about is the high traffic rate, the plan of mixed-use development, walking areas. We learned some terrible tragedy occurred in Rogers, when people were struck and injured, and one killed, with people turning in off of a high volume in a mixed-use development plan. And that's kind of where this pushing toe without keeping this residential. It's just lack of a plan for the whole area is the problem, and residential is what you need to leave it until there can be a better plan developed.
Hi, I'm Vincent Reynolds, and I live immediately to the east on the nine acres. Did you have the aerial map that you sent out of this region?
It is in their packet. They have it on their iPad.
There's no way to project it though. Can I see it? This is the acreage that's all wooded, and this is the subject property. And this is my house, and it goes back here over here, it's on nine acres. And mostly the fire beds go down halfway to the driveway that starts on Township, down to halfway to this property. There are lots of trees on there, which are an excellent sound barrier, but I wondered, if we put in a parking lot, a lot of those trees would be cut. Very recent issue of the tree ordinance, but also just the visual and sound effects on my property, and all the neighbors on all these streets are, as you mentioned, are concerned about the increased traffic. I turned in, I don't know if you got all the petitions, but there were a sizable number of petitions that we turned in this morning and last Friday.
We did receive the petition, I've passed it around.
What factors the tree ordinance have on, this property is currently being invaded by, I think, call it an Asian honeysuckle, which has been articles in the paper about it lately, Dr. Hanselman. It's planted at the university 50 years ago, and now it's everywhere in Fayetteville. And any kind of land that's untended, you've got this Asian honeysuckle, has little red berries on it, and birds bite it and scatter it. The, anyway, any land that's untended in Fayetteville's gotten this pest on it. And my, as my wife said, she wrote to you a letter, that there's two gyms, I think, down at the corner, and then the other one at Joyce, is another Fayetteville Athletic Club. And then there are some unused lots down on Mission, that's in thick with businesses and banks and everything, that would be more suitable for this kind of business. So I would recommend that people are designed to build the, this business, look at those lots, which are ideally located for a business, instead of this, which is residential. Everywhere, if you look at this map, these are all houses, houses, all houses, all houses, and all the way down on both sides of the street, you get to the junction of Mission and crossover where business began. I think it doesn't fit with the existing homes that are there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Please state your name for the record, and anything you'd like to add.
My name is Dennis Bailey. I live at 2748 East Mockernut Crossing, which is directly across the street from this property. Mr. Jones has come prepared this time, and he has good friends who are willing to speak My statement would be very simple. I've lived in Fayetteville for 45 years, in five different neighborhoods. Fayetteville often talks a good talk about city planning, but in each of those locations where I lived, within five years, we were faced with the issue of commercial encroachment. Each time I finally made the decision to move, hoping to find someplace where we didn't face that issue. I thought I had it at my present place. I even asked very specifically about the property across the street and down the street on crossover, and was assured that it was safe and secure from commercial development. And Mr. Jones' spokesman, 18 months ago, declared all of crossover from Mission to Springdale is already commercially developed. I couldn't help but wonder about such a statement. That's not what the last gentleman just showed you. I don't understand why directly across the street from this business's present location are vacant lots that are very much in commercial property. Why there could not be the construction of this building or something similar there? Why bring it down crossover toward the north where we live? My plea is let the homeowner in Fayetteville live with a sense of security and safety about his home. Don't put us in a position where it's a constant battle with commercial development. This is a business that's being proposed. It's not a private exercise club, it's a business. And once we approve that, then we know what's going to happen to the remaining lots that Mr. Jones owns. And we know what the push is going to be on the agricultural property that lies to It's an axiom of American values that a man's home is his castle. Help us protect that. Don't make us have to come down here every 18 months, or sooner, and plead for the protection of our neighborhoods and our homes. Crossover is becoming a beautiful entry to the city. I just drove in from a trip last night, and it's very different leaving Springdale and heading south with what's happened. And it's going to be more beautiful once the trees are established, and the city can do more along that avenue. Let's keep the beauty that's there and improve it. Let's not turn that whole avenue into strip development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Daphne Chandler. I live on Hardy Lane. I'm directly across the street from John Brown's. I do not see a commercial area in that particular area. I'd like to see it stay residential. I bought my property there years ago to enjoy the rest of my life, and I didn't object to the fact that when John had horses over there, it was very nice and everything. Now the traffic is terrible, but we're happy to have a better street that we need badly, but we do not need added traffic to it. And I cannot see sitting out on my deck, or looking out, walking out on my driveway, looking at some building over there when there is, the man has the one now, shopping center, and then there's one down there off Zion Road, and it's running up in there. And I don't know why they keep saying it has to be commercial whenever he said, "Nobody would want to buy it." Well, if they put their sign up and get buyers, there's people buying all the time to build houses and build homes, and I'd like to see it stay residential and not be commercial, because you don't need that added traffic, and you don't need somebody coming in telling you, "Well, you need this." Now Jerry Jones back here has a lot of friends and a lot of support that's for it, because they're all businessmen. Well, if these businessmen had to live next door to the commercial, they wouldn't like it either, they'd want it residential. I thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comment, I'm going to close the floor to public comment.
I thought someone else was coming up. My name is Ann Bailey. I too live across the street from the area that we're discussing. I live in Mockernut, Mockernut Crossing, which is in Hickory Park. My plea, you have two large schools, both Vandergriff and McNair. My plea, you have two large schools, both Vandergriff and McNair, not very far from this location. And if you visit this location, especially early in the morning, or three, three-thirty, even four o'clock in the afternoon, you will see school buses, not one or two, but three, four, or five at a time lined up at this intersection to go through and go down in front of this proposed site. Traffic on that proposed site is already very, very, very heavy and especially those times of the day. Two, you will see children crossing the street, older children going to McNair from across township and across Crossover. When I see those children crossing the street, I just sort of close my eyes and hope for the best because traffic is already that difficult. I think you're jeopardizing those school buses. I think you're jeopardizing those children crossing the street. And I think a visit there and seeing the school buses lined up on township or lined up on the corner of Crossover making a left turn, that's the way most parents use those schools. And so I ask you, in considering this, to please keep in mind, it's not one large school district, one large school, but it's two, the spirit right around the corner from that.
Thank you. Okay. Now seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commission.
This is Secretary.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you. Some of the commissioners may remember, I spoke a few weeks ago on the importance of street design and land use policy. I think that this is kind of a textbook example, in my opinion, of how a, in my estimation, a completely incoherent and in some ways incompetent, street design is leading to a situation where we have a lot of good points being made on both sides of this question because there is, as I said, a lack of coherence and a way to move forward in terms of the land use policy adjacent to this road. There's actually a name for roads like this, and I didn't make this up, people that are a lot smarter than me did, but they're called strods. And what a strode is, is it's basically a combination between an inefficient road and an unsafe street. It's sort of the futon of traffic planning.
That was awesome.
So you have a situation here. You have a situation here where you've got a bike lane, a three-foot wide bike lane that is shared with traffic that goes fifty to sixty miles an hour on a regular basis. There's also a sidewalk. You know, we, most planners will tell you, they know as a point of fact, that people will only walk about a quarter mile to go from where they are to where they need to go. There are no, currently, this is obviously part of what's up for discussion today, but there are currently far more than a quarter mile between places to walk to on this road. So, sort of the joggers notwithstanding, every time I drive down this road, the sidewalk is usually completely deserted, as is thankfully the bike lane. Because I don't personally have children, but I don't know many people that do have children that would want to like go for a family bike ride on this road. It just seems insane to me. So I'm looking at the request, I see the applicant saying sort of more on the street side of the argument, saying, okay, well, we invested in this public infrastructure, there's sidewalks, there's bike lanes, there's traffic, people are here in this location. It makes a certain amount of sense to locate businesses there. And the, just in terms of public policy, I also have to agree that, you know, when you're investing millions and millions of dollars in public infrastructure like this, it's very hard for me to understand how you would not want to locate businesses and other, the highest best use, that idea came up. It's very difficult for me to understand how you would not want to then locate businesses that could actually begin to pay for that massive infrastructure investment. Then on the other side of the coin, I do very much appreciate a lot of the comments of the neighbors, particularly with regard to traffic safety. You certainly won't ever see me riding my bike on this road. And if I lived in the neighborhood, I, you know, I wonder how easy it is actually to walk or ride your bike from the neighborhood to a business like this, which, that is sort of one of our principal goals in planning Fayetteville, is trying to, you know, not only plan our land use in a kind of intuitive way, but in terms of reducing congestion, you know, actually trying to locate businesses strategically with regard to residential areas so that people actually don't have to get into their cars and they don't actually have to add to congestion. So it's a very, very interesting idea. I'm going to hold off on commenting on the grounds of the specific request until I hear some other commissioners speak. But I would say that I think that we need to sort of keep in mind the end game with a street like this. I think that we can either go sort of the street way and try to make this a walkable area and try to locate businesses where people might actually have a chance to do something that doesn't involve their cars. Or we can go the roadway, which I hate to say it, but the road isn't going to end up looking anything like this. In five or ten years, people will be saying, "Oh, it's too congested, it needs to be wider." And, you know, fifteen years down the road, suddenly we've got an interstate cutting through these neighborhoods instead of a commercial district. So there are downsides to each of those routes and I, for me, again, this is sort of a, if I'm looking at a strode, I feel like the thing to do is decide, okay, street or road, which way do we want to go? Thank you.
Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Autry.
This has been before us a couple of times. And I tend to agree with a lot of the residents that have spoken. My main concern, I'll echo Mrs. Bailey and Mrs. Meacham, the number one thing I see is the traffic flow, and we all know what it is, it's posted at forty-five, I think even fifty in one section. And traffic does zip down through there rather dramatically. What you've got, you've got a potential turning area at, I believe, Township and then Joyce. And what I can see happening will be, even though this isn't a gym the size of an Fayetteville gym down on Joyce, you're going to have turnaround, you're going to have people that's going to try to make either legally or illegally a U-turn. You're going to have people that will be entering the neighborhoods doing a U-turn where you have two schools, a lot of buses, a lot of pedestrian traffic. And that's my main thing, it's unsafe down that corridor. I think Mr. Hoffman has stated it very well. As I stated, this has come to us before and it's been rejected each time. And I think even some of the past proposals may be better than this one. I mean, we have a building here that, yes, you've mimicked some of the Hardy Board, it's on some of the homes that's in the area, but we have a north elevation here. We don't allow that anywhere. There's no, it's no articulation on that. You've got a blank wall and you've got a roof, okay? And that's on the north side. Now granted, in your verbiage here, you stated that you're going to eliminate as few trees as possible, and I commend you for that, it's a great idea. But you're still going to have the parking lot that looks like on the south side, somewhat articulated, but you've still got your beautiful roll-up door there. On the east side, it's blank wall as well, but again, that's going to face, I think, Mr. Rutledge, if I got his name correct, his nine acres, so that really, I don't think will be an impact. But that north side, there's nothing aesthetically pleasing about that whatsoever. Unfortunately, and it's a term I've used before, another little controversial thing, sometimes it's a buyer beware deal and what you've got here on this piece of property is a giant long piece of pie that gets narrower, it's the widest on the south end and it gets narrower and narrower as you go north. And Mr. Jones, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Ridgeway, Mr. Shelton, what you may have here is some piece of property, I don't know if you can ever do anything with it. I wouldn't build a home there, I'm an avid bike rider, I wouldn't get near any of those streets over there. If I live in that, any of those communities, I would put my bike on the back of my truck and drive elsewhere, okay? So you've got a piece of property, and it's unfortunate, you've got single-family homes all around you, which is great. It's a great place to live, it's somewhere across the street on the west side of Crossover, been there for years. You've got essentially a brand new developing the last twenty years over on the east side. And you've got a traffic flow that's just, even though your membership is minimal, it's still going to cause some additional impacts, both for their safety and everything else. You've got an unfortunate piece of property right there. I don't know what may ever become of that, Mr. Jones, and it may be an albatross that, yes, you may pay taxes on for as long as you own it. But I can't see a home going on there, I can't see commercial of any type because we've already listened to a couple of those. So I may not have to hold any additional thoughts till later. I think I'm fairly clear on how I feel, but I'm certainly will listen to all the other illustrious commissioners.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Mr. Acting Chair.
Mr. Hoskins.
Okay. With all due respect to Commissioner Autry, there's a lot of things that was just stated that I totally, absolutely, totally disagree with. First off, I think Mr. Jones owned this property for a very, very long time, so I don't know about the buyer beware thing. You know, very few things do I get like just dead center on the fence about, and this happens to be one of them. Because if you look at our City Twenty Thirty Plan, it would be appropriate to locate small, low-packed, low-impact businesses within residential areas. Of course, then of course we got the strode, and I totally agree with Mr. Hoffman on the futon of roadways. And when this came through, the redesign of Two Sixty-Five, that was one of the first things I said before it was ever approved, was you're really going to put a bike lane next to dump trucks going sixty miles an hour? Apparently they decided that they wanted to do that. The other thing I do, that I'm looking at is, is, you know, I'm not one of those people that subscribe to, well, sorry, you own it, pay taxes on it, tough. I'm just not one of those people. And I think Mr. Jones should be able to do something with his property, something that is reasonable. I have a question, and I want to ask staff something. Mr. Jones had come through here a couple of other times with the zoning proposals on this property, Andrew. What were those two zoning proposals, do you remember by chance?
I do remember. The first one, the first one was to go from, I think, RA to maybe RSF-four, and I think that was denied, and they got RSF-two. And they came forward and I believe they proposed RSF-eight and that was denied, then they proposed RO and that was denied.
Okay.
And I don't remember exactly all the ins and outs, that's kind of my recollection, but.
Yeah, and mine's pretty close to yours as well. I didn't think it was quite that extreme, but, you know, to me, which I don't know where I was when I voted on this, but to me, higher density along Highway Two Sixty-Five makes sense. Maybe we didn't like it because we didn't really know what the access was going to be or what have you, and maybe a planned zoning district would have been better at the time. I don't know, I don't know what we were thinking at the time. But I don't think that R-two is reasonable for this property. Now as far as the building and all that goes or what have you, we're not looking at large-scale development tonight. They can give us images of whatever they'd like, doesn't mean they're getting approval for that building tonight. They have to come back through for that. And so to me, while I totally appreciate everything the neighbors are saying and agree with them in many, many ways, to me, something of low intensity, light commercial use that does not generate a lot of traffic, kind of makes sense on this property to me. I don't believe that they will generate any additional traffic to the area, they're already in the area. And I don't know that they would, that we're going to have a lot more cars going through neighborhoods or U-turns or what have you, or maybe the U-turns possibly, but going, cutting through neighborhoods or what have you, because we've got medians through there, half the neighborhoods don't have access to Highway Two Sixty-Five as far as being able to turn left and turn right at will. Anyway, it is a tough piece of property, I will grant you that. I just, I don't know how many times we continue to kick Mr. Jones in the teeth every time he comes in here, but anyhow, you know, my knee-jerk reaction is, leans towards being an appropriate use of this property.
Thank you. Thank you.
Acting Chair.
This is my.
I have to compare with Tracy, believe it or not.
Oh, figure.
Because of everything that's been said, it is difficult to build homes on it. And if you were going to put something commercial, something this low-impact would be ideal. So I have to agree, I'm dead in the center.
Thank you.
Mr. Acting Chair, Secretary. Granted, they're in the area, but they're up nearly a mile on Joyce, so they actually will be coming to this area from their current location, their destination is elsewhere. And it's that old can of worms, it's, well, the first commercial's in there, so the next piece is going to be sold there to the south, and then, okay, we might can wedge something in up there to the north of it. And, you know, I know we look at these on an individual basis, but I just can't get around the safety factor with the crossover situation there and those, and I do empathize with Mr. Jones, that's, it's a horrible position to be in. It was an investment and sometimes they turn out great and sometimes they don't, as we all know these things. But I'll be through for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown. From a detailed standpoint, I'll save time for the commission and everyone and say that I agree totally with the staff findings on this. But I did want to take an opportunity to comment on a general planning philosophy standpoint. The city of Fayetteville has grown over time in a utilitarian-type zoning philosophy. And with the Twenty Thirty Plan, we have made a commitment to the introduction and the sensitive, appropriate application of form-based zoning. This area, the residential development on either side of the road and the road itself and the location of the commercial areas on either end of this residential area in between, that's been more of a utilitarian type of development along here. And we've made that investment, the city has made even more investment to try and make that work by making the improvements to the road with a median down the center, limited curb cuts, you know, they're making a commitment to seeing this area between the two commercial area intersections as residential. I don't think that this would be an appropriate area to make a change to a form-based zoning philosophy. I think we should continue on with the direction the city has had. We can, in the city of Fayetteville, have form-based zoning in appropriate areas and then more towards the core as you move out in the transect towards the edge of the city. then more towards the core as you move out in the transect, towards the edge of the city, where Euclidian zoning has been a dominant factor in this development, then we should probably support that. There may be some areas in between where, you know, a sensitive application of both, you know, could be considered. But I think in this area, we should support the development that the city and the commitment the city has made for the look of this community, and the neighbors, you know, obviously have moved out there and agree with it. I like what the city has done along this state highway, and I would like to see a similar approach along Highway 16 going out towards Elkins. I think that the commitment that the city has made zoning-wise to having residential areas and then commercial nodes, which again is more Euclidian philosophy, but I would like to see that kind of development along Highway 16. In fact, in previous cases that we've held along there, I have voted no for some of the commercial development that's being proposed out there based on that. So that's the only comment that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Acting Chair.
Mr. Hoffman.
I just wanted to hop in. I'm looking forward to hearing from Commissioner Cook in a minute, but I'm glad Commissioner Brown brought up Euclidian zoning. That is an incredibly important philosophy, just in the history of townmaking in America. For the benefit of those that aren't familiar with that word, it basically means separated uses, right? So zoning was basically invented in kind of the early 20th, part of 20th century, 1920s in New York City. The idea was to separate uses to get specifically noxious uses out of neighborhoods, so they were trying to remove factories and really nasty things like that from neighborhoods. It's, in terms of the end game, the way that it's played out towards the later part of the 20th century and now, it's an utterly failed planning policy. It's probably the biggest reason that, unfortunately, we're not in the council chambers right now, but in the council chambers, we have six goals of the 2030 Plan sort of enshrined, framed above the dais. And goal number one, if I recall, is, has to do with discouraging sprawl. Euclidian zoning is sprawl zoning. That's how sprawl happens. Sort of, so, I mean, you can sort of be for it or against it. Sounds like Commissioner Brown might be for it. I'm very much against it. I think it would be a disaster to continue to allow that to propagate on the edges of town. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I don't want to turn this into a political back-and-forth, or philosophical back-and-forth, I should say. I am not a proponent of Euclidian zoning, but I'm a realist, and we have a city that has developed, and we have a citizenry that relies on the safeguards of Euclidian zoning. So I think we, as planning commissioners, need to take our goals at heart like I have. I'm totally for form-based zoning. I totally agree that that is more superior than Euclidian zoning. But we have to, we have to be sensitive in how we apply it. And I just think this is a good example of where the commitment has been made by the city to separate uses. And provisions have been made to provide adequate commercial areas at those nodes, and in between them, we have, you know, residential areas that we want to preserve, and the people who live in that area rely on that. So that's, I've been, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of Euclidian zoning, but I'm a realist.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cook.
I guess I'm the last one. Sometime when you have time, I'll talk to you about 265 a little bit, and how that kind of came about in my time, but I'll take some responsibility. You know, I tend to agree with the residents to some extent, but I also feel for Mr. Jones, and I, you know, I almost, I almost feel like this, I think as a residential zoning is going to be very difficult, there's no doubt. And I tend to think something like Neighborhood Services might work better with very limited commercial uses, but still maintaining the residential form. I might be more in tune with something along that line, but I don't, I'm not a fan of what he's proposing tonight. It's, you know, the street creates issues with what he's proposing, in my opinion. I think in a lot of ways, I mean, I think the neighbors have fought everything that we've, that has been proposed on this, and I don't blame them, honestly, but at some point, I think there could be a good buffer between them and 265 with the right limited use on that piece of property personally, but based on what we're looking at tonight, I'm not a fan of this conditional use request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, unless you want to say something, I'd ask somebody that's in favor of the conditional use to make a motion, because that's the burden's on the government.
Okay. I'll give my input as well. I tend to agree with Commissioner Hoskins on this. I think I'm definitely on the fence, but I do think, you know, this is a low type of commercial development that I do think would fit well here, and I'm leaning towards supporting the development for the rezon-
Conditional use.
Conditional use, sorry.
Mr. Acting Chair.
Mr. Hoffman.
I think I'm going to, as well, I'm going to support this. I really do want to make clear, though, that I really appreciate the comments of all the neighbors and in support of my position. I would just say that, you know, I think we all need to try to imagine this place and what it's going to look like in 15 years. And as far as I'm concerned, I think that if we look at that, I think that we would all prefer to see sort of light, low-impact commercial rather than a interstate highway cutting through these neighbors, these neighborhoods. And I honestly do think that it's sort of a choice between those two things, at least that's how I see it. That's why I'm going to be voting in favor of the conditional use.
Mr. Chair, let me, I want to say one more thing I kind of forgot about. So, you know, 265 has been an interesting road in Fayetteville because originally, it was always residential, very limited commercial out there, and now we've widened it, and the commercial is coming. But we've, one thing we've done out there is we've tried to hold our commercial to the nodes, the big intersections, you know? It's Mission, it's Zion, it's Joyce. We've, I mean, some's creeped a little bit away from those, but in general, it seems to hold to those nodes, and that's kind of generally what the city has tried to do with their 2030 Plan and looking at the big picture of things. And I think in a lot of ways, we want to try to maintain that. I think we've let that slip away, obviously, in 71 business over the years, and some in Martin Luther King over the years, and we've tried to maintain some of that, but it's slipped away too. And, I mean, we, Weddington, going out Weddington, we've let it slip away there, and it's, I mean, we see what we got, and nobody seemed to like that. So I think in a lot of ways, 265 is a little, it's still in that incubator of what are we going to do with it and how are we going to control it? And we've tried to maintain the residential on that street, more or less. So that's all I want to say. Thank you. I don't want to prefer table.
What did he say earlier, Mr. Williams, about having a-
It would need to be a proponent, passing the conditional use would need to be one making a motion.
Motion.
Russell, I guess you just die for that one.
A proponent, make sure I understand, a proponent in favor of the conditional use.
I think anybody can make a motion, and you can vote against your own motion. I think just procedurally, it will help things along if we get a motion on the floor to approve the item and let the commission vote for it.
Good point, good point.
I'll make a motion. I'll get it going. Let me get it back up where I can see it. I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit 15-5278 with staff's recommendations.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Cook to approve CUP 15-5278, and a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, can you roll, please?
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
No.
Hoskins? Brown?
No.
Cook?
No.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunt?
Noble?
Yes.
The motion fails. I need five positive votes for conditional use.
Thank you.
That's so close, man. I mean, it's like that, it's holy mackerel.
Take a five-minute break before Claire Valens.
I'm going to call our meeting back to order again, and we've got our last item for tonight. Is that the last one? Yep. Okay, which is CUP 165330, conditional use, 426 West Lawson Street, Branch Communication Cell Tower.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
I'll be recusing from this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will. Property was located on Lawson Street, east of Greg Avenue, on the hillside there. Property's under RSF4. It's currently undeveloped, tree-covered lot. It is in the hillside, hilltop overlay district. It's near Wilson Park, just west of the VA, Veterans Administration Hospital property. The request is for a conditional use permit tonight. It's for a cell phone tower, a wireless service tower, 150 feet tall, what we call a stealth tower, with an area, and it has, you know, equipment at the base, and approximately 4,200 square feet of building and fenced area with this 150-foot tower. These, and this is my first experience with conditional use for a wireless facility, but they've become very technical very quickly, as some of you are aware. We have quite a bit of ordinance and details that have to be followed by an applicant, providing quite a bit of information. Some of them are putting balloons at the height in the sky and showing and advertising for that so that the city can see what that's going to look like. Some of it has to do with proving that you, that you're providing enough access to other companies that they can co-locate on this property, within this tower. You have to prove that you need this. In this case, that is still in question in my mind. I think Sprint is the facility that needs this, Branch Services will surely be able to answer questions about why this is necessary, but from the staff planning review, looked at it, there have been a number of, and I'll just back up and say, the bigger situation is, a number of these utilities have been located on the VA water tanks for years. This is one of the oldest sites in the city, one of the very first where we had any access is right there on the top. And the VA has decided to, within the next year or so, as I understand it, to not renew any more leases for these locations on their water tanks. It's a, I believe it's a homeland security issue. There are a lot of people climbing up and down these towers all the time, and overall, it's been decided that it's best not to have a lot of people on these water supplies and so, and this federal supply. So the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over this property, and we've had therefore no issues and no, nothing contested about having towers or facilities located on these. But they're kicking everyone off, and so these utilities are necessary. We all rely on them, and we have to decide if this one is necessary, if this is the very best location for this, both service-wise and for aesthetic reasons. And, you know, with those issues in mind, I've looked at this to the best of my ability and looked at these materials, and first of all, have not been able to decide if this is necessary and if it's why. There recently come to our attention that another tower is going to be built on this hill. It is going to be built on property that is not within jurisdiction of the city. We have a lease agreement for that. That construction has started or is about to start at any time. What I don't know is how much capacity is within that tower that's about to happen? Is there enough capacity within that to make the Sprint Tower unnecessary? And hopefully, we'll get some answer to that tonight. I also feel that this, so that's one of the, that's one of the most important tests, is it necessary? Is this the best location? Is there a better one that we can use? In fact, we require, ordinance requires that if a city facility is available, that we use the city facility. A water tank, a tower, a tall building, that we look at that and see, and decide whether that's useful. I think it's probably an issue of the city preferring to have those leases at rents too. They're quite lucrative. So with that and with the fact that it is in this very stable residential neighborhood, 150 feet tall, it's still very tall, it's a stealth tower, but it is not that stealthy in the end. They are very visible, but again, you know, so that, and it is a necessary utility, so we have a lot to weigh. Staff has decided to recommend denial of this request based on that visual impact on neighborhood and also not feeling comfortable saying, yes, this is necessary, and we believe this is the very best site for this antenna to be located. So I'd be happy to answer any questions I can for you. We do have some conditions of approval here, should you approve, should you choose to approve this request, and I'd be happy, again, happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Before we go on, you did say, where's the other tower being built? Is it-
It's being built on UAMS property, which is directly south of the existing water tower, essentially.
Okay, so that's-
A hundred feet to the south.
The old Washington Regional property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Actually, near, I think it's a gym facility-
The Center for-
To, yeah, on Woolsey, so it'll be very near Woolsey Street.
Okay.
Center for exercises.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, please come up and state your name for the record and tell us a little bit about the cell tower, and if you can answer any of Mr. Quinn's issues, be great.
My name is Kayla Kramer, I'm with Branch Communications, Agent for Sprint, and with me are Alyssa Kelfield and Terry Stanford from Sprint. They're here also answering technical questions. I passed out binders containing this presentation and additional documentation for the record, most of it to address staff comments. This is a unique situation from the other cases that we've heard tonight, because the local government is not the only one that has a say in the tower sighting, but also the federal government provides a set of parameters that must be observed. four twenty-six Lawson Street to replace the location that is being lost in order to maintain and upgrade the existing surface. So that would be the necessary part of this tower. In spite of staff's recommendation of denial, we feel the proposed cell site is a good location that not only satisfies the Fayetteville Code of Ordinances as noted throughout the staff report, but meets the intent of the ordinance to provide the least visually obtrusive site within the given search area. Fayetteville Planning Staff drafted a report dated three fourteen regarding the site with a total of thirty-three findings addressed. The majority of the findings reported generally the applicant has complied with the specific rules governing this individual conditional use request. However, we would like to address the following four findings. First of all, granting the requested conditional use for a one hundred and fifty foot tall flagpole in this location may affect the public interest, in particular, single family residential character of the neighborhood. The area is in stable residential area of largely owner occupied homes. The expected land use based on the future land use map and City Plan 2030 remains residential with a mix of densities with non-residential uses located at primary intersections. Locating a tower on this property may discourage residential development, possibly resulting in development patterns that is contrary to the city's adopted land use policy. Our position is locating a tower in RSF zoned locations is not prohibited by the ordinance. Section one sixty-one oh seven for RSF four zoning states that the used unit thirty-six wireless communications facilities are permitted as a conditional use. Our proposed site is consistent with the tower located at ten sixty Township Road, which also is a one hundred and fifty foot stealth tower in RSF zoned area, showing the same land use on the future land use map and City Plan 2030. The stealth tower is adjacent to another monopole on the same parcel. Since the tower was built in two thousand nine, thirteen houses have been built along Wilderness Lane in direct line of sight of both towers, strongly suggesting cell towers do not impede residential development in RSF four zone districts. You can take a look at that in tab Z of your packet. The tower meets all conditions and we feel a denial based on future hypothetical event of discouraged residential development is not consistent with the Telecommunications Act and could not be supported in writing with substantial evidence. Second staff finding is, in staff's opinion, a one hundred and fifty foot tall wireless communications facility in this location is incompatible with adjacent properties and other property in the district. The site is located within a stable residential neighborhood and the introduction of commercial wireless facility could result in adverse impact on property values if the views are affected. The proposed facility is located on an undeveloped lot with adjacent parcels to the east and west owned by the same landowner. A wireless telecommunications facility is not prohibited in a residential zone district per the ordinance, therefore the site is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. One sixty-three point one three of the ordinance states, "Tower shall be designed to be camouflaged to the greatest extent possible, including but not limited to use of compatible building materials, et cetera." One sixty-three point one three of the ordinance states, "Wireless communications facility shall be surrounded by buffers of dense growth and understory vegetation in all directions to create an effective year-round visual buffer. Trees and vegetation may be existing on the subject property or installed as a part of the proposed facility or combination of both." Our position is this proposed tower is a flagpole-like stealth structure located over one hundred and fifty feet from Lawson Street in the middle of a parcel that is heavily wooded with extensive screening and buffering, as acknowledged by staff findings. Additional landscaping has also been proposed to compensate for any vegetation clearing necessary for construction as shown on sheet A1 of the construction drawings in tab B. The claim of introduction of a commercial wireless facility could result in adverse impact on property values is at best another future hypothetical event that lacks a substantial legal interest and has been held up in US District Courts because among other indirect decreases in property value are not sufficient to constitute a substantial legal interest. Additionally, within the substantial evidence standard, courts have upheld that a few generalized expressions of concern with aesthetics did not serve as substantial evidence nor did protests regarding decreasing property values offered without supporting evidence in the form of appraisal. Furthermore, the Telecommunications Act prohibits consideration of a telecommunications tower's alleged adverse health effects. The third finding is the applicant has indicated that there are no suitable locations for co-location within a half mile. However, the applicant may not be aware of a tower plan for a nearby VA property. The applicant's proposal is for a flagpole style tower with antenna internally mounted. We did make a good faith effort to find suitable co-location opportunities. As of the date of filing deadline for this CUP request, February second, there were no existing towers nor any towers in development, having filed for a conditional use permit or a building permit. The planned tower referenced by staff would be owned by Smith Communications to be built in a parking lot on the VA property. To my knowledge, this tower does not have a contracted tenant at this time and it shouldn't be built at all, would be built upon speculation they can get tenants as the carriers seek the VA water tank. We are aware Smith Communications has a great relationship with the city. In fact, when we first began a search for suitable location to relocate the Sprint facility, we were advised to prepare a site candidate information package, a skip, for a new site to be developed by Smith Communications. The skip was submitted on eight twenty-three fifteen. It's in tab D to Sprint and subsequently approved to move forward with lease negotiation. However, on nine one, the negotiation was terminated after Sprint was unwilling to negotiate on the rental rate. It was Sprint's intention to move their antennas to a new tower to be developed by Smith Communications until they would not commit to working within Sprint's pricing for the Arkansas market. That's also in tab D. It was then decided to seek out a raw lane candidate which became the current proposed The next finding, in staff's opinion, the proposed location is not superior location from a community perspective. The tower is in close proximity to existing residences within the Wilson Park neighborhood. The tower will have a significant visual impact in the area. The VA hospital has signed a lease with Smith Two Way Radio to allow the construction of a tower on the VA property that appears to not have been explored by a potential co-location for the applicant. Service towers on the VA property do not require planning commission approval as the city has no jurisdiction over federal lands. It's our position, we've met all conditions of the ordinance as written. In comparison to the Smith Tower, should it ever be built, we believe our proposed tower is actually a much superior location to the Smith Tower, as you can see in tab E. It is in the middle of a densely wooded location surrounded by trees and vegetative undergrowth, key points in the zoning ordinance. The Smith Tower is in a parking lot with minimal natural trees for screening. Being outside city zoning jurisdiction, there's no guarantee they would even provide landscape screening for that location. The proximity to residences in the Wilson Park neighborhood is a difference of less than one hundred feet with little to no tree buffering in between. The only difference is transferring one set of neighbors who may see a tower from the property to another set who may see the Smith Tower. As previously stated, we did attempt to negotiate with Smith Communications for space on this tower, did not come to any agreement on business terms. As with all flagpole-like stealth towers, the current technology Sprint is deploying requires two separate center lines at a minimum, as a minimum, that will include antennas and radios. These will be contained in two separate canisters at fifteen feet each. A comparison of the difference in what the Smith Tower would provide versus a Sprint Tower would be like apples to oranges. Sprint's design allows for six antennas and associated radios within their two canisters. You can see that in tab E. Smith Tower would allow six antennas, but the radios would have to be on the ground. The restricted design of Smith Tower and the restrictive cost structure of their tower space would effectively prevent Sprint from deploying the two point five technology. We would like to add that Smith's pricing is fair if it was for a monopole, but because of this design structure, it becomes cost prohibitive. The difference here in analogy is someone who wants a new house in the area with six bedrooms and six baths, but Sprint is being told they have to buy three bedrooms and three baths at a higher cost with outdated features. Sprint currently is located on four other Smith Towers, but in this case, the tower is too costly due to the design that is needed. Denying Sprint's ability to deploy their two dot five technology may have the effect of prohibiting their provision of service, which is not allowed in the Telecom Act. There is no separation distance requirement in the zoning ordinance preventing towers from being built in close proximity to each other, should Smith Communications actually build a tower on the VA property. We have provided sufficient evidence that we did conduct a good faith effort to co-locate on their tower and it is unfortunate a deal was not reached. However, we should not be put in a situation where the city picks winners and losers based on the longstanding relationship between Smith Communications and the city. In conclusion, this is a good site. The application with respect to the proposed facility satisfied all of the criteria as set forth in the city code to install a wireless communication facility in the proposed location. We are before you today asking for this permit and cannot be beholden to a future event that may happen or may not. Any objections to future hypothetical events cannot be supported by substantial evidence contained in written record with documentary or testimonial evidence. Staff seemed unaware of the extensive negotiating we did conduct with Smith Communications, but were unable to close the deal. However, that should not prevent approval of this application since we satisfy the criteria of the ordinance. We're asking for approval of this conditional use permit. Yeah, would you guys like to hear it from Terry Stanford?
Um, yes.
Yeah, their whole group, probably.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, yes.
Do you have questions for me? I'll be happy to-
No, not, no, we'll wait till, wait till you're all done, so.
I'm Terry Stanford, Market Manager for Sprint and for the state, well, several states, the state of Arkansas. What's, what's we're talking about here, it's about apples, oranges, we have a two dot five technology. We cannot deploy that with putting our radios on the ground, as you have to do with these stealth poles. I call them all stealth poles, slick poles, flagpoles. You don't have enough room in most canisters to put your radios up there. So, the design that we put together, we put it in there, and it's thirty-five thousand dollars X-Treme, to be able to stretch this out, so we put our antennas in, we had to have two rad centers. They make money off of selling a rad, the height of the tower, and we understand that. Like I said, we own four towers with Smith, got a great relationship with them, we know them very well, do business with them. But you gotta have two rad centers, then you gotta have three more five foot sections to be able to put your radios in there. We cannot deploy two dot five with our radios on the ground. So, there's a technology that we bought and we're licensed to provide to the citizens that we cannot if we can't put our radios in there. And we already have the price for two rad centers, which is prohibitive to our model, our cost model. And again, as I stated a while ago, you've got three, you've got three carriers coming down. And, you know, take Smith's pole, we have to go, we can't use Smith's pole, we'll have to go somewhere else, okay? Knowing that, where's the other two guys gonna go? You've got three carriers, and with this slick pole design, they all are trying to do the same thing. If you go by and look at these towers, everybody puts their radios up with their antennas, you get faster data speed, you get faster everything, and that's what everybody wants. You want your phone, you wanna be downloading a picture, just like that. You put your radio down, we cannot, our engineers will not allow us to install a two dot five on coax, is what you use, instead of fiber. That's why you got fiber at your house for your TV and stuff, first you got cable, I mean, or copper, so we moved to that. The only other question, you know, we haven't, I had not proposed, but I found out that it was no zoning, so if Smith would build a monopole, which is against city ordinances, but I guess it's not part of city, we could use one rad, we could put all nine of our antennas up, six of our antennas and all of our radios on top of it. Supposedly he's on non-zone property, y'all have no control over that. So, why can't we, why can't Smith build that kind of pole, like you say, where else? You know, we call them monopoles, where you have multiple rad centers. If that happens, we're in good shape.
Yeah, either style of pole is allowed in the city, monopole or flagpole, there's no ordinance, you know, or-
But we do require stealth, and so everyone that's been approved in the last ten years-
It's a stealth, it's a flagpole.
It's not in the ordinance, they could put up the monopole on their, on the VA property if they wanted to.
And this parking lot is the VA parking lot? It's not, it's-
UAMS.
It's UAMS?
Or UAMS.
Yeah.
But, but who owns it?
Who owns it?
No, Washington County.
Washington County, okay.
So, it's owned by the county, but there's no zoning in the county.
Well, why do you keep referring to it as the VA parking lot, then?
Well, that's why everyone calls it, it's UAMS.
Okay, okay.
We were, we were in the VA, and we were on that in Assembly UMAS.
Okay.
Questions I can answer?
Uh, I don't think we have any right now, we'll call you back up if we do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in your group to speak tonight that? Okay.
Not the Sprint.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right then, I'm assuming that there might be one or two people that comment this evening, so when, I'm gonna open the floor to public comment and I would ask you to take your turn. Please, you know, you're probably, a lot of you are probably gonna be saying, you know, similar things, please try and, you know, keep it as concise and brief as possible. And you come up, you state your name, you give us your comments, and then once I close the floor to public comment, then it's closed unless we call you back up individually. So, I'm gonna open the floor to public comment now, and please state your name for the record and give us your comment.
My name is Eric Parkinson, I live in VA Hill, about two hundred yards from Woolsey Street and the VA property at three three five West Holly. I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in the neighborhood and I do have quite a few of the other neighbors here tonight. We handed out about a hundred and sixty flyers to different residences in what we call the VA Hill property, plus the adjacent neighborhood of Forest Heights and along Sycamore Street, which is kind of like the Woodland Hills, or I mean, Woodland Junior High area. We, we found unanimous consensus and opposition from the neighborhood because this is a purely residential neighborhood, it always has been. Ironically, that particular property, which was previously owned by one of the people here tonight, Rudy Hatcher, was sold to a member of the neighborhood specifically to stop commercial development from happening. It was sold in June twenty-fifth, two thousand and four, and was the catalyst for the formation of our VA Hill Neighborhood Association because there was a lot of concern about the possible encroachment of commercial as well as the possible relaxation of tenancy occupants for single family housing. A lot of students started to create the impression of stealth dorms and we banded together to stop that and we were very successful and one of our neighbors actually bought the land potentially as insurance. I have to say that I'm a little shocked that the woman from Branch Communications has a very well-planned response because she actually made several references to the recommendation from the planning staff, which we as neighbors didn't get a see in advance. But despite the fact that we're only gonna have to be able to talk to you about what we know from not having that reported in advance, I'd like to start with the presumption of the need for this tower. We contacted the VA administration and right now there is a little bit of a transition. Dr. Mark Endley is retiring at the end of this month and there's uncertainty as to what they're going to be doing, but I did get an email and each of you have a copy of it on the very back of the thicker stack of petitions that you have from Wanda Schull and it also references the head engineer at the VA hospital, Walter Gordon. And they actually, in writing, have a different story about what happened with Sprint. They seem to think that Sprint voluntarily terminated the lease because they wanted to add additional capacity. And I do understand the need for additional capacity and that we all wanna, you know, watch Facebook and get our pictures a little bit faster, but when they asked to add the capacity to the tower, then there was a structural engineering issue where the additional relays would create too much weight, and the VA said, no, you're allowed to continue with the existing lease, and this email does confirm that the existing leases could be continued, at least this is what the representatives of the VA, the head engineer and the public affairs officer are telling us. And then they said, and if that's not enough, then perhaps over at the UAMS lot, which is, which we, as you know, Smith Communications is attending, planning to build another tower, there would be overflow for additional tower capacity. Speaking about the aesthetics of that lot, it's functionally not even visible from North Street or Woolsey. I'd have to say that on my personal behalf and not on behalf of the neighbors, I would find that to be a far better plan for a tower to be on the UAMS property than to be in the middle of the residential neighborhood. We do have residents here tonight that live across the street, adjacent to the entire site, the four twenty-six. I did find it to be a little ironic that one of her points is that the property owner on both sides doesn't object because it's just property owner that's talking about the lease. So, that doesn't surprise me, that would be surprising if he did object. But in any event, the issues of the Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six, yes, it's true, we're not allowed under the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act to prep forward any of the potential health risks of being next to a high intensity electromagnetic field.
So, they probably shouldn't even be discussed.
Well, we're not allowed to talk about it, and so, a lot of the emails that I've given to you are from the neighbors who relied upon the German studies and the Australian studies, and you can just kind of skip over that part and pretend like that there was no lobbying to stop those studies from being allowed. And let's just talk about the issue of the residential neighborhood and let's talk about the issue of whether or not, you know, there's, it's funny to say, you know, it's anecdotal that having an industrial tower in the middle of our neighborhood is gonna hurt property values. I find that to be a laughable- that I've given to you are from the neighbors who, who relied upon the German studies and the Australian studies, and you can just kinda skip over that part and pretend like that there was no lobbying to stop those studies from being allowed. Um, and let's just talk about the issue of the residential neighborhood, and let's talk about the issue of whether or not, you know, there's, it, it's funny to say, you know, it's, it's anecdotal that having, uh, an industrial tower in the middle of our neighborhood is gonna hurt property values. I, I, I find that to be a laughable, uh, defense of putting something in this neighborhood. Some of the neighbors here bought their property specifically because of the views that they have, or specifically because this has always been a, a residential neighborhood. So, I, I, like I said, um, there's a lot of people here that wanna say kinda the same thing. I think you're gonna hear a lot of people say, "We think this is a really, really, really bad idea. We find this to be something ironic, because this protected, particular property was the formation of our, our Neighborhood Association, and we hope that all of the commissioners will see that this is not a, a necessary need." If there is a need, just as food for thought, and again, this is my own personal suggestion, southwest corner of Gregory Park could easily accommodate this, and all of that rental revenue could go to the city instead of to a private owner, or instead of to UAMS and Smith Communications. Or, the city could hire Smith Communications, put a tower in the southwest corner of Gregory Woods. But whatever the case is, there's a lot of other options besides putting it right in the middle of a bunch of homes.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. No, no clapping, come on, it's just, you know, it just, just don't do that, and if somebody says something you don't like, I also don't wanna hear boo, or his, or any of that stuff. So, uh, is that, is that all your public comments, then?
No.
Okay.
Yes, and I will be brief. I appreciate you guys sticking it through the night, and have a new respect for the planning commission, first time in here. So Hal Roach, and I lived, uh, I live in East Fayetteville now, but prior, I lived for 12 years at 1365 North Van de Venter, which is right across the street from the proposed location of the tower. I'm still on that house. Uh, it's, we used it as a rent house, but we still invest in it and take care of it. And, uh, we've seen our neighborhood, uh, recently, we've had a home in our neighborhood that was, uh, sold for $630,000, because it was remodeled, and, and we were very proud of that. We've had a couple other nice homes in our neighborhood that have been improved recently, and we think that our neighborhood's on this, on the up, upswing, and, uh, and we think this'll be a, uh, a big, uh, speed bump to that. And, and I think you guys showed a lot of fairness in the previous discussion about the highest use of a property, and I don't know the technical terms in common, but, that, just recognizing that a cell tower in the middle of our neighborhood wouldn't be the best use of that neighborhood, or that property, when infill and sprawl are some issues that you guys have weighed heavily on in the past. So just wanna remind you of that. And I ask you two to consider that this is really more about competition than the community. You know, AT&amp;T and Sprint are very profitable companies right now. I actually own stock in AT&amp;T, and it's up 15% this year, because they're a very profitable company, they're, they're the pharmaceutical companies of the new millennium. So, uh, you know, if, uh, you know, if, if you guys could vote no tonight, that would be an obstacle to them, and they'll find an opportunity to provide cell phone service to their customers in Fayetteville somewhere else. So, I do believe it's, uh, possibly competition between, uh, Smith and Branch, you know, and if you guys vote no tonight, like every good business that they are, they'll find somewhere else to meet the needs of their customers, and just not at the extents of our neighborhood and the city of Fayetteville, which you guys have done a good job of looking out for in previous nights. So, you know, that's, that's it, and I appreciate it. Uh, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Brenda LaRoche. I am, uh, I own the property directly across the street from the proposed property. So, um, when we talked about obstructions, I literally, it, it's a rental house currently, but all my properties are potential homes that I might live in one day. You would literally walk out the front door and be looking at a 150-foot tower. Had, when I was looking at this property, I would've never bought it if it had had a cell tower directly across the street, so my obvious concern would be, if I ever were to sell this property, how in the world would I ever get somebody to buy it with a cell tower? The other thing, I was looking at the, um, proposed, um, option, the other thing is safety. There's a big, looks like propane tank on the property, and, um, I just, I'm concerned about the safety of that. I think I saw on the news the other day that there was a huge explosion from a propane tank up in, I think it was Ohio or somewhere. So those are my big things, depreciation and value of property. Um, you're literally right in the middle of a residential street. A lot of people have redeveloped their homes and spent a lot of money, and I think, I, I used to work for a cell phone company, so I get, you know, what they're trying to do, but I just think there'd be better location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
My name is Larry Pierce. My wife Pamela is with me. We looked at Fayetteville for about 15 years as a place to retire. Uh, lived in Fort Smith for 31 years, practiced medicine there, and decided that Fayetteville was the right place for us because of the inclusivity and the opportunities culturally. We loved having a university in town. And we couldn't find a house initially, so we rented for about 11 months, uh, and spent those 11 months looking at hundreds of homes, and would deliberately not choose one that was close to a cell tower. And then we finally found this house at 1321 Van de Venter, and moved into it in December. And one of the reasons that we did was because it has a wonderful view, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and there were no cell towers. We would not have chosen to buy that house had this cell tower been in place when we were lucky. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pierce.
I live at 100 West Sycamore Street, uh, which is, uh, directly, I think, north to the site location. Um, lived there for about four years now, with my wife and two kids, and, uh, I would encourage you, uh, on top of not, without repeating ourselves, that, uh, Wayne Gretzky had a quote to, "You need to skate to where the puck is going," and that's what made him so, so great, and that's what I would encourage Sprint to do. Think about cellphone usage for college students who use their cellphones more than any other demographic, and as you look at residential expansion of college students, it would tell Sprint that if you do wanna be a profitable company, please find somewhere else where, uh, your cellphone tower could be used, uh, better. Also, I would encourage those, uh, living to, directly to the west of our area that have a, a great view up the hill to the VA, to the east, that, on behalf of them tonight, they deserve a good view too, and a cellphone tower would not accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brandon Moore. I, uh, live at 400 West Fisher Lane with my wife and two small daughters. Every day I drive from Fayetteville to Rogers, and on the way back from Rogers, the first thing that I see as I crest the hill looking down into Fayetteville is the VA Water Tower. Immediately to the west of that, about halfway down the hill where the site is proposed, to see another 150-foot structure obstructing the view that Fayetteville has put out for itself in the past years, you can see it in your wonderful, like, crest that adorns the top of the mayor's office. You wanna keep those skylines protected, um, aside from any other property values that may be denigrated. Um, I, I think just the, the general view to not only the residents of the area, but anyone driving along 540 and their perception of Fayetteville as they come out of the billboard lane that you go through in Springdale and Lowell, having Fayetteville skyline as a breath of fresh air as you crest the hill. Uh, I will also just like to point out that, um, the effects of lead in our environment from leaded gasoline that was, um, you know, denied the health effects of for years and years and years, we're still, you know, just discovering today. So like, not commenting on any other health effects other than on lead, but just saying, lead is really bad, and we're just figuring out what lead is all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You would think Congress for us not discussing the other sort of radiation.
It was lead.
It was Congress that decided we could not discuss that.
Hi, I'm Kelly Castell. I live at 285 West Holly. Um, I've been a resident of this area for approximately a year now, and I don't wanna take up much of your time, I wanna thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I would say, being the city of Fayetteville, your interests purely should lie in that of your residents, and this is 100% a commercial interest. Um, I happen to work for the largest retailer. I know for a fact that Sprint does not have great service in this area, and so the need for this is purely in their interest, it's not in their residents. So we ask that you keep that in mind, especially in looking at, at a conditional use. Um, I'm not sure if it's valid for a commercial interest, and that, that is exactly what this is. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Robin Bowen, and I own 1329 North Van de Venter, owned it for six years now. Um, you would see the, the tower from my bedroom, um, but that's not my main concern. My main concern is loss, and, um, that road is very small and in bad shape, and if you let them build that tower, you're just gonna tear that road up. Um, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
I live at 1119 North Shady Lane, um, and I'm just, I'm here to register my, uh, objection to the tower. I actually, uh, don't live necessarily in sight of the proposed tower, but if there's one that goes up on UAMS property, I will be in direct sight of that one, so I appreciate the young man who put out a objection to that one as well. Um, and, um, I've lived in the neighborhood for almost 11 years, former president of the Neighborhood Association. We've worked, um, hard to keep it fully residential, and, um, we will continue to. So, thank you.
I'm Mary Kay Crowe, and I live at 330 West Holly. I've owned my home for 12 years. It's a major investment for me, and it's an insult and an affront to, uh, to suggest putting this rezoning in kitchen, conditional use in a residential neighborhood. So, and I will say amen to what everyone else has said. So, thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Yes, hello, my name's Galen Estope. I live at 1529 North Forest Heights here in Fayetteville. And, uh, one of the reasons that my wife and I bought our home was the view. We have a spectacular view, a panoramic view of Fayetteville. When I sit in my breakfast nook, and I look, I can see the university. Now, I'm gonna be looking at a cell tower that's 100 foot above my second-story level. So, and it's only 450 feet away, so it's gonna have a devastating contrary to what's been said earlier on my property value and marketability. The whole reason why we bought the house was because of the view. So, you know, my, I was a corporate executive and retired in 1999. My wife's a schoolteacher of 38 years here in the, here in the area. And this was our retirement home, and that's where we're going to stay. Now, if this tower goes in, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do, 'cause the whole purpose was the view. We bought the view, and we paid, uh, a lot of money for that view. So, what I, what I ask you to do is, you know, don't listen to corporate expediency at the, at the, at the, at what's gonna negatively affect the residents of that neighborhood. And it's not just me, there's others that are in the, you know, the same situation. So, uh, I would sure appreciate, uh, if you would, uh, do all those considerations and deny, uh, the conditional use. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Rudy Hatcher. Uh, I own, uh, five parcels that are directly affected by this. I've owned property in that immediate area for 23 years. In 2001, I came before this very board and asked for a conditional use to build a duplex on a property that's immediately west of this tower. And at that time, many of partially the same people, but by and large, the whole planning commission, none of which, I don't think any of you were here, except for maybe you were.
Yeah, I go way back.
But, uh, at that time, it was decided that there should not be a duplex built. So I built a single-family residence. If this tower goes in, my single-family residence will be 150 feet from the base of that tower. Exactly. That's how, my house is the reason they determined where to set the tower. I also have houses, I have a house and several lots in Forest Heights that, like Mr. Estope, that basically I can see Oklahoma from, and, uh, I initially thought that this would not be much of an issue, because this would be considerably lower, and when I found out the elevations, you know, it's kinda amazing, I don't know if many of you have been up that street, but it's a, it's a very steep street with a tremendous view up there off cul-de-sac, and this tower would stick up like literally a flagpole right in front of the windows of my house. So, I would hope that y'all would vote the same way you voted in 2001, and preserve the character there. Thanks.
Is there anybody else? Now's your chance. Okay.
Hi there, my name's Dave Reynolds, and I represent Smith Communications. Uh, we're at 520 North College, uh, started here in Fayetteville in 1929 on the square. I just, I wanted to address some of these things that, that, that have come up, and believe me, there's no one that's more pro-tower in the world than me. Uh, but, in this one, uh, the, the thing I wanted to address mostly with this is that the application, and there's a, a, uh, part of this application and, uh, and the requirements for the city of Fayetteville that make it quite unique, in that there's a thing called the Wireless Communications Facilities Submittal Materials Checklist. And, uh, some of the, the items on this have not been addressed. There's several issues through this with the, oh, well, here, I'll just read one. Describe why the proposed location is superior from a community perspective to other potential factors, or, to other potential locations. Factors to consider, or, I'm sorry. Factors to consider in the community perspective should include visual aspects, setbacks, and proximity to single-family residences. I, I have the, the submittal and the package and the staff report, and I don't see where that was specifically addressed anywhere, and, uh, how that was. And there's been a lot of talk about, uh, how this came about, and we did have many conversations with Sprint, with AT&amp;T, with T-Mobile, with Verizon over the years. This, this whole getting off of the VA Water Tower's not snuck up on anybody. It's, uh, it's gone on for years. You know, we've been asked at any given point by all of those people to develop an option for them other than that water tower, and so that's what we've done. Um, o- over years of time to, to make this project happen. But, uh, we've also looked in the other area, in one of the other, in other locations. And, you know, in, in this location, there are about two areas that work. The one we're at, UAMS slash VA property, that could technically work, and, and the proposed property. Other than that, there's not another spot in that neighborhood and area. The, the spot that's proposed exactly barely by this much fits the ordinance, the, the technical requirements of the ordinance, except for the conditional use parts where they address the community's needs and, uh, how this should work. We looked at that and flatly did not think that that was something we wanted to do, uh, at the proposed location, and, uh, really didn't think it would work as far, just because of our familiarity with, with Fayetteville zoning practices and, uh, the, the inability to answer that question. Uh, some of the other questions have to do with the, uh, the good faith- Some of the other questions have to do with the good faith effort to co-locate and was that made? I haven't seen any documentation or answers in the presentation that was made. Could they have put these antennas on top of the UAMS hospital? Did anyone ask that question? Was that answer submitted in any way? There's one thing, you know, we've done dozens of these towers, particularly in Fayetteville, and there's another thing called a balloon test or a tower simulation. And usually, you know, the coverage, whenever we presented these in before, the things that this board always wants to see and are required by this checklist are required to be submitted with the application are the photo simulations of the tower, the pictures of the balloon test, that kind of stuff. There's none of that. That's not in here, it's not there. Nobody's presented any idea or perspective of what this will look like to the community and hasn't fulfilled the basic needs of the application. There are dozens of this and those are the issues I wanted to address mainly as a tower builder in Fayetteville in Northwest Arkansas where it's our specialty. I don't understand how this could even get this far or be considered without meeting these requirements of the application. And if not, it's sure going to make my job a lot easier in the future. And as all of you, some of you know and, you know, you'll see me again. So, that's what we had to say. And I did want to let you know that we do have a lease there. It is with UAMS. It's all been fully executed, approved. And except for the half a stance of about a half a foot of rain, we would probably be a lot farther along than we are in the construction of this tower. But it will be built and will be there. There's also just for, and Mr. Williams probably remember this a lot better than most, is that we had a very similar situation out on Weddington Drive and Double Springs Road where we had had a permit to build a tower that was technically in Washington County outside of the city limits. About 75 feet the other side of the barbed wire fence was city of Fayetteville. And our tower was under construction and permitted first, but not in a built state, if you will, not completed. And we can't, that's the only other time we've come before this board in opposition of any project or not. I'm not even in opposition, don't get me wrong. They meet the letters of it as far as the spacing and things. But I want you to know that in that case, probably the, and the folks there and in hindsight, I'm sure a lot of people would look back at it and say, probably the only thing worse than one tower is two towers next to each other. And that's most definitely what we're on the road to here. So, thank you very much and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. Do we have any other public comment? Anybody else? Okay. I'm going to bring this back to the commissioners now. I'm going to close the Florida public comment. And Ms. Kramer, we will bring you back up then. Excuse me, Kit.
I think I need probably to respond a little bit to their attorney and what her presentation was, just to clarify some things. I also prepared a memo that because we haven't faced something like this in 10 years, so that means none of you have faced it. And there are federal rules that we've got to, we've got to look at on this particular thing. I think I do agree with Dave Reynolds about the balloon test. They did in this latest thing they just handed out tonight have alleged photographs of a balloon, the balloon as opposed to what is almost, is always shown before is so small is to be worthless. And I think they have not really satisfied the code in that particular section. And the balloon test is designed to make it where you can look and have a pretty good idea of where the tower is. Well, this one, there's some sort of little pinpoint. I don't know if they went out to their local store, carnival store and bought one, but it's surely not the kind of balloon we ever saw before that actually you could tell in relation to the other structures around it, where the tower is going to be. So, I think that they have failed in that test and not supplied a good application. I do want to say there is, there is a cell tower on township that where there are houses around it. It is also located at a water tower site. And there was a question about why do we want to co-locate on water tower sites the city owns? Not only is there a chance that we can get some revenue, but more important than that is for aesthetics. We realize that water towers are not aesthetic, neither are cell towers. So, once you've already polluted the sites with a water tower, that's a good place to put a cell tower. They're both located in a residential area, but you won't find very many cell towers, if at all, that stand alone in a residential area. Certainly, we've been accommodating to cell companies. We always try to be accommodating. We've decided many, many cell towers throughout the city. And I've explained to the planning commission over the years that unless there's a very good reason not to, it must be done. Here, I think, let me just talk about what the law is here since you all haven't seen this in a long time. And this is actually the federal law, 47 U.S.C., Section 332, subsection 7, which talks about the general authority. And it says, "Except as provided in this paragraph, nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government over decisions regarding the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities otherwise known as cell towers." And then it goes down to limitations. Here's where we're limited. Remember, it says everything but these limitations. In limitations, it says, "The regulation shall not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services." You can't discriminate against cell providers. You know, I don't think we've ever done that, but that's one of the limitations. They limitation, the regulation shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting provision of personal wireless services. Well, here you can see that it looks like, at least for a while, they can continue to provide exactly the same services they have for a long, long time off this water tower, according to what the email said from the VA. And I think it's up to the, to show us indisputable proof that they're getting kicked off, that they have no option but they must leave and that also that there is no other reasonable location which would not be as incompatible with adjoining neighborhoods as what is being proposed here. So, they're supposed to go around and our code tells them, look at all the other possible locations. Now, you can rule some out. You can say, well, we can put a tower here, but look, the coverage is not good. You can put a tower here, the coverage is not good here. We've seen that in the past. I don't really think that that is what's happened here because I think the VA property, even if they can't be on the water tower, why could the VA not allow another cell tower as maybe they're already doing? But, you know, there is that flag tower on the Evelyn Hill side of the VA property. This is, of course, on the other side, but would they not allow another separate flag tower even beyond what they have allowed Smith to build, assuming that's what's going to happen with Smith Two Way? So, you know, that's a real gap, in my opinion, on their application. Have they shown that they cannot locate anywhere else on the VA property or the UAMS property that would not be as intrusive to the neighborhood? Now, it says, "Any decision by state or local government to deny a request to place, construct, or modify personal wireless facilities shall be in writing," that's going to be my job, "and supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record." And that's really your job. "Our regulation shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting provision of personal wireless services." But I don't think that means that you have to give them something where they can be the fastest possible service ever. They have to be able to be able to provide services, which I think they are now. Maybe their services can be upgraded. We'd all like them to be upgraded, but that doesn't mean we have to if that violates other portions of our ordinances when it comes to compatibility and aesthetic considerations. Here's what some of the courts have said on this. This is Omni Point Court versus Zoning Hearing Board of Pine Grove, which is a Third Circuit case back in 99. "A few generalized expressions of concern with aesthetics cannot serve as substantial evidence for purposes of that particular section. And similarly, a few generalized concerns about a potential decrease in property values, especially in light of the plaintiff's contradictory expert testimony," which we have not heard, "does not seem adequate to support a conclusion that permit should be denied." Now, we've heard fairly detailed objections, not only on the aesthetic situation, but on property value loss by several neighbors here who I think were not just saying it's going to hurt my property values, but explained why. A lot of it was the view. "The Telecommunications Act of 1996, which sometimes called the TCA, for people like to abbreviate itself, requires that the planning commission issue a written denial separate from the written record minutes of the meeting, even though that's somewhat changed now in recent spring court cases. That written denial must contain a sufficient explanation of the reasons for the permit denial to allow a reviewing court to evaluate the evidence in the record supporting those reasons. In assessing the visual impact of the proposed tower, the board was entitled to make an aesthetic judgment about whether that impact was minimal without justifying that judgment by reference to an economic or other quantifiable impact. For a telecommunications provider to argue that a permit denial is impermissible because there are no alternative sites, it must develop a record demonstrating that it has made a full effort to evaluate other alternative, available alternatives and that the alternatives are not feasible to serve its customers." And I don't know if just because they can't agree on exact property, rental payments, I don't know if that's enough to satisfy that particular condition. We don't try to get involved in between private enterprise. And they also have shown us that there are no other feasible alternatives. The county boards, that was our 2001 case out of Massachusetts. These are all federal cases. "A county board's denial of a wireless telecommunications application for a tower was upheld because of evidence of other potential alternative sites in the region." And that's another federal court case saying, "If there are other alternative sites, you can turn down their application." "Aesthetics are important and would include compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. However, the neighbors need to be specific and later on so do the commissioners." And I think we've heard some specifications from the neighbors and detailed in their objections to the cell tower on aesthetic compatibility grounds. And here's a quote from Southwestern Bell Mobile Systems, Inc. versus Town of Lycester in 2001. "The five limitations upon the local authority and the TCA do not state or imply that the TCA prevents municipalities from exercising their traditional prerogative to restrict and control development based upon aesthetic considerations, so long as those judgments do not mask, for example, a de facto prohibition of personal wireless services." Holding, and they cite another case that holds that the TCA does not prohibit local authorities from applying general and nondiscriminatory standards derived from their zoning code. "In assessing the visual impact of proposed tower, the board was entitled to make an aesthetic judgment about whether that impact was minimal without justifying that judgment by reference to economic or other quantifiable impact. Nevertheless, the aesthetic judgment must be grounded on the specifics of the case." I think that Smith Wireless is well familiar with aesthetic concerns and how important they can be because he tried to build a cell tower out in the county, Washington County. So, it was outside our jurisdiction. And it was denied primarily on aesthetics or virtually only on aesthetics and property value issues from county residents that were complaining about a cell tower, about built out in the county even though they don't have nearly the kind of zoning protection that our citizens have here. The county is much more wide open on what can go on there. And yet, the judge and later the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals found that the evidence presented was going to mess up their view, going to hurt their property value, that that was substantial evidence. Now, even though we are held by, to the federal standard of this substantial evidence, that is a standard that actually is good for us to some extent because that gives you actually more discretion than you would normally have in a conditional use request. Conditional use requests by, usually by the Arkansas Supreme Court, are held under a standard where they don't give you much credence, they just look at themselves and kind of weigh the balance themselves. It's not like zoning where it's, you must be arbitrary and capricious to be rezoned on a zoning decision. But under federal law, it will not be reversed if there is substantial evidence, which doesn't mean 51%. It means substantial evidence and they do grant a lot of discretion through the planning commission in that in viewing the aesthetics, viewing the property valuation, viewing the other arguments, whether or not they did satisfy their requirement to show alternative reasonable places. And that was a case that Smith Two Way lost in the Eighth Circuit, just came down a couple months ago. And there's, so, obviously aesthetics and the tests that your judgment will be held to are something that I think that do give you discretion to listen to the neighbors here. And if they have convinced you on the incompatibility and the aesthetic problems and loss of property values and other issues like that, that your judgment would likely be upheld if challenged in federal court.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any, who wants to start with their comments?
Sure. I'm sure.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Oh, I don't know who was in here an hour or two ago, but Commissioner Brown and I, who I, I want to say I like very much and highly respect, had a little disagreement a little while ago on zoning and specifically Euclidian zoning and its merits. And I mentioned the original use, the original reason that Euclidian zoning came about, which was to, specifically to prohibit noxious uses in residential areas. Personally, I find a large sort of industrial construction such as this one to be a noxious use. I, you know, relative to our, again, to the conversation that we had about the previous request, I mean, this is not a, this is not a sort of low-intensity commercial building being slipped into a highway. This is a, this is a very large, very tall piece of commercial infrastructure. And I want to emphasize, I want to emphasize commercial infrastructure, that is, you know, there to be made profit with being inserted into what I consider to be one of our most vibrant neighborhoods. This is, we do, as we've discussed already this evening, we, we do want to encourage infill as much as possible. This is a, this is a, this is a great place. There's a lot of wonderful building sites on this hill, all with incredible potential. And, you know, in thinking about sort of the normal set of variables that I would look at with anything that comes before this commission, be it a zoning request or a conditional use or what have you, I'm somebody that's sort of very focused. I've already brought it up. I'm sort of very focused on our city plan, City Plan 2030. If you're not familiar with it, I highly encourage everybody to take a look. There are six goals. Normally, again, they're written on the wall here. Again, look those up. And I have a really difficult time sort of imagining how granting this request fits in with the general goals of our city, particularly when you weigh that against the relative importance of first ring suburbs and within the city of Fayetteville and how important those are to actually accomplishing the goals that we've set out. I didn't write down names for this one. I was trying to pay attention to all the technical information, but one of the gentlemen that spoke actually brought up our city seal, which I, which I had not considered. But in looking at it, that is our skyline, you know? There are, there are a lot of railroad towns- There are, there are a lot of railroad towns out there that put, they'll put a locomotive on their, on their, on their city seal, whatever, you know, there's, every city has its own thing, but this is Fayetteville, and we do have our skyline, and it is beautiful. And in looking at, in thinking about sort of the different hillscales and hillsides in our town, this is, this is really a kind of signature place. And I, I tend to concur with all of the arguments relative to aesthetics, that I do agree with the city attorney, have been very specific and profound. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
It was brought up at the cell tower over on Township, located next to the water tower. Of course, the water tower was there long before the cell tower was, and I noticed that the applicant had put in their presentation, or whatever, houses that had sold up on Wilderness Drive, and I believe that's what's the little new subdivision that's to the east of where that cell tower is. One thing we've got to consider is, is the visibility, okay? And that neighborhood sits well below, it sits on the downhill side of Township, or Township's going, down to the east or what have you. For anybody to be looking at their house, looking out of their house at the cell tower, they have to be trying to see it. And also, I'm actually pretty familiar with that neighborhood because at one time I was asked to, to actually participate and purchase some lots up there and build in that neighborhood. And the cell tower up there bothered me more than it did anybody else, trust me. I know that I wasn't going to invest in any lot, that even though you had to really try to see that cell tower, I knew that I wasn't going to, to take that kind of risk. And so anyhow, and then we have other cell towers, we even got one that looks like a pine tree.
We do.
A two-way tower, it looks like a pine tree.
I'm still to this day trying to determine if that was a good idea or not. I'm trying to figure out which was uglier, the monopole or the pine tree, or at least which was less weird. But anyway, I guess I can see somebody's reasoning for that since it's kind of down next to the highway. Anyway, no, actually, I can't.
We just tried that once, and we learned our lesson.
Yeah, boy. Unfortunately, somebody had to pay for that lesson besides us. Anyway, so anyhow, and I know that the city attorney kind of, kind of said that their little picture up here with the teeny weeny balloon, I even marked it, or whatever, the tiny balloon was not adequate. I disagree 100 percent. It's plenty adequate for me. That little dot up there perfectly demonstrates to me that, that from an aesthetic point of view, this is a really, really bad location for a cell tower. I don't think I can stress just how bad I think it is. As long as the city attorney states that, that we can deny this request based on aesthetics, this is going to be one of the easiest ones I've made, and I don't know how long. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I have a question for staff here, and this is just something that is kind of, you know, just for my own information. Where, isn't there a cell tower on Mount Sequoia?
Oh, yes.
At the top of Rockwood Trail?
I know there's one up by the Methodist Assembly Center, because that's the only thing I can see from my house.
Yeah. But isn't, isn't there also a cell tower, right at the very top of Rockwood Trail?
Three of them on the map I gave you, page two.
Okay, well, it's not like I don't have anything else to, I don't like to skip pages here. But, so I was just wondering about, about that, because I know there's, I know there's, in other words, what I'm getting at is I know there's one up there.
Oh, yeah.
Because I drive by it all the time.
Yeah.
I, you know, when you drive by that tower, it's, you're on top of the hill, or where I'm coming from, I'm on top of the hill, I don't really see it that much. It's off, it's off on one side. This, yeah, you know where it is, too. Yeah, it's right, it's right there on top.
By Williams Drive.
Yeah, it is by Williams Drive, that's right.
Not named for us.
I, this, this location, when I think about, you know, I was driving around over the weekend, and I think about what everything's going to look at, look like, there's a point where if it's on top of the hill, if it's on top of something like a water tower, it's not as noticeable, because you already got the tower there. And everybody wants water, you know, so that's not so much of an issue usually. But to move this down into a neighborhood, and I drove around this area, and I thought about what this is going to look like when it's, when it's built, and I really think it's going to be horrendous, I cannot support this. I just feel like there's got to be a better location somewhere else, and possibly, you know, in looking at what the, if the VA would allow them to continue to rent there, or possibly work out something with Smith Communications, I just, you know, I think that's got to be a better option than this. I just don't support this at all. So, that's my two bits.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Offery.
In another life, I'd sold for Motorola Communications and Electronics back in the 70s and 80s. I know I don't look that old, but anyway. The cell technology was basically at that time a theory. They were just waiting for the technological advances to catch up. Theory was in place, and here we are today, cell tower, city, across the globe. On the way down here today, I drove from, pulled in at Meeks, at Greg and Township, and of course, just over there to the north and west of Meeks is a 125 or 150-foot tower. You proceed on south to North Street, and that's 1.4 miles, where there is the VA Tower, which is loaded to the brim, the tower that Counselor Williams referred to earlier at the VA, over there towards Evelyn Hills. There's also about a 100-foot tower, a very short one, at Leverett and North, behind the church over there. And that thing is jam-packed with equipment. And we're, we have another one that if this body I wish would have had anything to do with the situation going on at UMS, which we didn't, I would have been vehemently against that one. And now we have another one because VA won't rent to Sprint anymore, their technology, and that's a key point I want to make. It seems like Sprint's technology is what's limiting you to a degree, because it can only go on a certain tower. It's too big for this one, it won't work on that one, we've got to have four RADS, or whatever they are, that you've got to have. So, you know, maybe your technology doesn't work for a lot of sites. When you say stealth tower, that's the most, a dichotomy of words you can, or terms you can possibly put together. I mean, it's a 150-foot tower, I don't care if it's white, beige, sky blue, you're going to see it. On the checklist, American flag at the top of it, it was a beautiful thing. On the checklist, I don't know if a better site was researched real hard or not, or if everything was exhausted to an extreme, but I can tell you one thing about this site, and it's in your balloon test, the elevation up there is 1,389 feet. Your test site is actually where the tower's going to go, is 1,387 feet, plus adding the 150-foot tower, you've got 1,539 feet on the top of that hill. I would agree with every citizen out here for property value, although that can't be discussed, but if I want to look out and see something.
You can.
Property value, I think, would have to be considered, because you're going to see this from College, you're going to see it from Greg, and you're going to, you're going to see it from Garland, the gentleman that's coming over the hill, any of us coming from, from north to south, that one will be the most prominent one. Technology is great. I understand the need for speed, because we all are addicted to these things we carry in our hand constantly, but there's got to be a better place than that. And I think the driving force is this 1,539 feet of elevation, which is a, back in the days when I'd sold these things, and they were much more crude back then, because there were two-way radios, again, not to date myself, but the thing you tried to find was the highest elevation for a tower, which back in that day, it was, I was in Little Rock, and we found every tall building in the city that you could find, Fayetteville. We don't have a lot of, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40-foot or story buildings, so.
We have.
I think, yeah, we've got, we've got the perfect location for a cell tower. However, one that is, it would, it would just be a mar on the landscape, that landscape of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, to the neighborhoods around there, and the neighbors around there, the aesthetic value and their property values, their views, which that's why a lot of people have moved there, and purchased there, and invested there. I think you know where I stand on this.
Yep.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I think, I've just got a lot of questions. And right off the bat, the current location on the water tower, at the base of the water tower, I calculate that at around 1,482 feet elevation, 1,482. And the proposed location is at 1,372, a foot thereabout. That's 110 feet difference there. How much of that 150 feet is needed because it's on the side slope instead of on top of the hill? You know, does it, you know, on top of the hill, does it also, at that point, need to be 150 feet? I don't know. I, I don't know whether they've, whether this is really needed, whether they've looked at co-location to, you know, adequately. I don't know if this proposed site is the best site, because we haven't seen any alternative sites, and we haven't seen any aesthetic or visual impact analysis done, rating the various alternative sites. So, and it sounds to me like they might not have even complied with all of the data requirements that the city has. I had a question of staff, is it, is it possible that we're, we're getting the cart before the horse? Maybe we need a more complete proposal for submission? And maybe we need to table this to allow the applicant to really, you know, get us the answers that we need to have.
One thing that federal law has done is require that there be a quick decision. It's called the shotgun rule, is in effect, that requires the city to make a decision relatively quickly. And so.
But that's based on, on a decision by Washington DC that they would expect all applicants to provide a good quality submission.
That's based on the fact that we don't.
And I don't think we have a good quality submission.
That's based on if we don't take action, it is automatically approved.
You know, at this point, I'd kind of like to have Ms. Kramer come back up. I feel like she's got, maybe could answer some of your questions, at least from their perspective of, you know, kind of get what was in there. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, the telecom match had an amendment done in 2012, and it says the application will deemed administratively complete if the municipality does not notify the applicant that the application is incomplete within 14 days. So, we did not receive any notification that the application was incomplete. We did do the balloon test, I think it was submitted in the paper copy, I checked my records, I did not send it an email with the other things.
It wasn't there.
If it wasn't, then we would have happily sent it, because they were there and ready to go, you know, but we never received notification within 14 days, but it was an incomplete package, so according to that, it was deemed complete.
Yeah, I think it, we did review the packet. I think it was complete enough to meet the letter of the code to be processed to the commission. I think the commission has seen the required materials that were submitted, so I do not think it needs to be tabled for lack of an incomplete application.
I.
I agree.
I agree also, and I feel like, from my perspective, I don't think tabling it is going to add anything to it that I would really need. I don't think, I don't know that it's going to change my mind if we table it, so I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but.
I just don't, I, I can't believe that there's not other alternative sites throughout the city.
Yeah.
And, and, and they're a big company, they can go out and analyze that and provide that information to us as part of the application.
But you must.
So that we can, we can then better, you know, respond and make a decision of whether or not this particular site is the appropriate site. I don't have that.
You must decide on the application that has been submitted. As you heard, the reason why we can't even question about whether that little tiny balloon was enough, even though it wasn't provided with the application, is because we did not deny it and say it's not complete within 14 days of submission. That's another shotgun rule. If you delay action, you're just asking to get caught by another one of these federal rules that have been placed into the law by cellphone companies, because probably occasionally they've run into cities that just drag their feet. That's not what we're doing, but these rules are dangerous, and I, so I do not recommend delay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Why have you gone down in elevation by 110 feet by this particular site?
The, well, this was a very small search ring, because it is based on the premise that the VA is kicking off all the carriers, and that is in your packet, an email from the VA to Sprint regarding this. Because this is an existing site with existing service that already fit within all the cell, the cell towers in the area, we couldn't move too far, or we would be in another tower's area, so it would be ineffective. So we had a very small search ring, is what we call it, to locate in. And we did very diligently try to lease with Smith. And what I'm hearing here today is really, you know, you guys are not really for a tower even up there, but you really don't have a lot of control over that. Bottom line is, this is, this tower, his tower's going to go up, whether Sprint locates on it or not, and there are two other carriers that are going to be looking for a place to go. There's not enough room.
But my, my question to you is, is why are you going down 110 feet? Because 110 feet puts it on the side slope.
No, that's really a technical question on that, it's not really.
Well, I'm just saying on the side slope is where you have more aesthetic impact. You have houses that are on that side slope also, that have views, as averse to locating the tower behind the houses, you know, at the top of the, at the top of the hill. And then also, is the tower any higher because it's 110 foot down than what it would be if it, if it was in a higher topographic location?
It does have to fit within, like I said, the existing grid that's already there. And yes, the elevation does matter. It, I have a map that shows if we would locate on Smith's Tower at 125, that we would lose four miles of coverage, four square miles of coverage. So, the height does matter as far as the coverage goes.
So the, so the fact that you selected that particular location on a side slope, 110 feet below your current level, that doesn't impact the design of the tower?
It does to a certain degree, yes, sir. A lot of the reason why we chose that one was, that was a willing landowner. Not, not everybody wants to lease to a tower. And then, yes, the setback requirements were very important, and that was one that would meet them just barely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Commissioner Hoffman?
On the contrary, I believe that they've got a, they've submitted a packet that's, there's, it doesn't lack any, any information as far as I'm concerned. I've got everything I need to make a decision. And of course, I don't think they're required to submit alternative sites with the one, along with the one they really, really want. They're, they're required to submit what they want, and that's what we act on.
No, they're, no, the code requires that they look at other sites.
Show that this is the best.
If you look on the last page of the memo I gave you, information required to process the entire request, provide a map that shows other potential standalone locations of your facility that have been explored, provide a scaled site plan containing information showing the property boundaries, show, describe why the proposed location is superior from a community perspective to other potential locations. Factors considered in the community perspective should include visual aspects, setbacks, and the proximity of single-family residences. So that is all that's supposed to be in their application. So that is all that's supposed to be in their application, and even if that is, there's been some information in the application about that, it still might not be satisfactory to the planning commission to justify the awarding of a, of a conditional use. If you don't feel like what they have provided convinces you that this is the right location from aesthetic considerations and proximates, proximity to residential areas, even if they've submitted evidence, doesn't mean you just have to take it at face value.
I have a, I have a.
Excuse me.
I'm trying to think. Oh, but as far as what we're acting on here tonight, this is the site, this is the site they chose. So this is the one we act on, this one, this one only.
That's right.
Okay. That was, that was my question.
Okay.
Madam Chair, what's that?
Commissioner Hoskins?
Okay. Excuse me, just one more, okay? I want to make a motion, please. Kit, I know that you like motions in the affirmative, but would you rather me make a motion to approve and then?
That'd be too confusing.
I think so, too. Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion to deny conditional use permit 15-5330.
Second.
We have, we have a motion to deny CUP 16, let me make sure I'm on the right one here, 165330 by Commissioner Hoskins, and a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Brown, Commissioner Brown, did you have something?
I'm sorry, I'm holding up the vote, but I did have a technical question that I had written down. I apologize, I didn't bring it up sooner. It's, it would be for Kit. Is there a regulation that says that you can only have the structure within so many feet of a, of a residential?
There is a fall zone depending on the heights of your tower. So if their tower was not 150 feet, it could be 100 feet. No house could be within 100 feet of it.
So now that it's 150 feet?
They are asking for 150 feet. That used to be one of the big issues we would face, is well, are we going to let them go to our absolute maximum, 150, or are we going to try to go to, not give more than 130 or 120? They obviously like the maximum height, and that's the way most of them have been permitted in at least the recent past.
I personally calculated three structures within 150 feet of it, and then I'm hearing from.
It must be a residence, not just a structure.
Oh, I mean, I mean, a resident, residences, within 150 feet, and, and I heard from the, from the citizen read that at least there was one that was within 150 feet.
No, I think, I think the citizen said his house was 150 feet away, immediately outside the fall zone. The planning department has looked at this and not said that they're violating the fall zone, so I don't think that that's a problem.
Let's see, okay.
Isn't that right?
That's correct. I mean, I think the, the calculation is from the actual pole, if the pole would fall over, the 150 feet is not measured from the property line, so it's where the actual structure. So I mean, there are residential properties certainly within 150 feet of the, of their property, but there's not any in the fall zone.
I'll have to defer to staff. I'm sure you, you know how to measure better than I do, but I, I calculated that there was three structures, and when I drove out there, they were, it looked to me like they were rental structures, university.
We still protect them.
There is at least one, there is one residence within the 150-foot fall zone that, that owner has acknowledged that and written a letter in support of the tower.
The resident within there can waive that if they want.
It's the actual owner of the, the owner of the property proposed for the tower.
Are the people that are within the tower, do they have any say-so? Are there, are there people within the structures, they may be renters, have they been approached, that signed up?
There's an email in the thicker package I provided earlier.
Excuse me. We're, we're talking to Kit right now.
The owner really controls, I will say that the cell tower is amazingly strong. If you look at devastated places, when hurricanes and stuff comes up, sometime, comes in, sometimes the only thing left is the cell tower.
Yep, they are.
So I think that that was actually part of things we put in originally when we were more concerned, and it's still in there, but I bet the inventory would tell you, they don't lose very many cell towers.
But it does have an impact on property values.
Oh, yeah. That's different.
Okay, I've got my.
So we have a motion to deny CUP 165330, made by Commissioner Hoskins, and a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Selby.
Oh, yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble. Motion passes.
Okay. That is our last item tonight, isn't it? Do we have, Andrew, do we have?
Can I ask one more question?
Do we have any, uh?
We do.
Are we sure?
We have a seven-day committee Thursday.
Okay. We're not, we're not completely done with our meeting yet, so if you, you guys want to waive, that's fine, but just don't, excuse me. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we do have one announcement. We have a subdivision committee this Thursday. Team number one, Cooks, Chester, and Hoffman.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Let's see, I think I'm going to be there.
For Chester.
I'm sitting in for Chester.
Okay.
When do we do, when do we do an elections?
All right.
The next planning commission meeting. We do have an announcement as well, the nominating committee, Matt, to prepare a ballot for your next planning commission meeting for the election of planning commission officers. And do we have any of the committee members here that want to announce? Commissioner Selby, do you want to tell who you selected to put on the ballot?
She can't remember.
I can't remember? No, I'm just kidding. I believe it is Kyle Cook for chair, Ron Autry for vice chair, and Matt for secretary.
So we'll put that on the ballot, and that will be for your votes for your, at your next planning commission meeting, and we will be in this room again at your next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
That means you get to run back.
Oh. Thank you.
That is the only, that's the only position, that's the only position that I think.